Started about ten oh five. City Council Special Meeting, it's May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five at ten oh four AM in the Selma City Council Chambers. At seventy ten Tucker Street, Selma, California, nine three six six two. The teleconference phone number is three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. The webinar ID is eight nine one six eight six four five zero zero five. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment part of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand. And we will select you from the meeting queue, press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Notice to meeting attendees, members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of threatening or abusive language or other acts which disturb, disrupt, or impede or otherwise render the orderly conduct of a city council meeting infeasible. Would you call the roll, please?
Here.
Councilmember Osagara?
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member who has a potential conflict of interest, may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Oral communications, at this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the regular meeting agenda or which the council has jurisdiction, no action or discussion. Will be taken on any item not on the agenda, issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public, rest, limit their remarks to three minutes. We have any oral communications at this time? We have anybody online or on the phone with oral communications?
Yes.
Now's the time. Good morning.
Okay. Joyce Kason. Seventeen oh one Dinuba Avenue. I have, I see that you're going to be discussing the new fire department. Is this a good time for me to ask some question or to give my interpretation of it?
Yeah, give your interpretation, definitely.
I'm concerned about it. Think it's in the wrong place. I don't believe it should be across from the high school. That's a busy place, many times in the year. And we don't need all that congestion and everything. What happens when you, you're driving along and a fire truck comes? You're supposed to pull over to the right. When you have all those cars over there, where are you gonna pull over? Has the school board said anything about how all those sirens and all the commotion might disturb the students? I'm just wondering these different things. I have a lot of questions about the choice of the spot. Not that we don't need it. I think in my mind, it should be in the southwest side of Selma. I really believe the people who live over there deserve more city services than they get. And I also would love to see this be a combination fire department and police department. I just think there's so many things that could be done to help the citizens more with this money. And you have two, two places that I know of, you have that lot and you have the one on McCall, you could sell them both and help bring up money to build these things that the city needs. I really am not trying to be negative about what you want. I'm trying to put in and ask you people, slow down, don't throw more money after a bad proposition. Slow down. You know you don't have the money to build one. Not right now. So let's just rethink it and do it right for all the citizens of Selma. Remember Selma first. Thank you.
Stella Ramirez, Selma, California. I agree with Ms. Kason. I think that it should, the fire department should be located in a different place other than where it's going to be. I also agree, excuse me, I also agree that it should be in the southwest Bado area, maybe along forty three. And the reason is because on this side of the tracks, we have, we're going to have three fire departments. On the other side of the tracks, we have zero fire departments, no fire departments. So in a case where there is a house burning and people are inside that house, there's a train coming. Who's going to, how are you gonna get across that, that train track? And I know it's been like this for many years, but the southwest is growing. There's more houses being, there, there was more houses being built now than before, than the seventies, the eighties. And there's going to continue being house developments out there, apartments that are coming. So as Ms. Kason said, I totally agree. We need to rethink this. I think it's happening too fast. I think we're way beyond our budget to build it. Um, I think we should stay within our budget. And I also feel that we should collaborate with the Selma Police Department, the Fire Department, Selma Police Department. Maybe build a building, split it in half, and you have both departments covering that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? That will move on to our consent calendar. First item on the consent calendar is approval, consideration resolution twenty twenty five thirty four for a notice of completion for the transit oriented development improvement project. The second item on the consent calendar for approval is consideration of resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty five approving first amendment professional services agreement with Griffin Structures, Inc. for additional service request. Number one fee for master plan, concept, design, and bridging documents for a temporary EMS facility to be incorporated into the new fire station headquarters campus. Does anyone wish to take any item off the consent calendar today? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion.
Sir, a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Avalos?
It was Osagara.
Councilman Osagara?
Yes.
Councilman Trujillo?
Yes.
Councilman Avalos?
No.
Mayor Protem Gera?
No.
Mayor Robertson?
Um, I'm going to vote no. Okay, we'll move on now to new business. Two one information item, which is the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, presented by Finance Director.
Let's get the part site link. Good morning, Mayor Robertson, Protem, Mayor Gera, and council members. The item before you is our proposed draft twenty five, twenty six budget. It starts on the agenda packet on page twenty four is our budget. So we are building our budget with sustainability with growth into the fiscal year. We base our expenses on more of a conservative, conservative revenue estimate to ensure that we have revenues to cover sufficient funds for the services of the city. So before I go on, before I go on to my presentation, I want to mention a couple of things. So your new structure budget that you have before you is incorporated a different structure. I have added the same table of contents listing is on the front page. And then followed by that, we added a new document called the fund sources document. And that's on pages ten and eleven of the actual document. It reflects the beginning fund balances as well as the projected ending fund balances and all, including all funds. My understanding, I think we have like eighty seven funds that we're gonna restructure on the years to consolidate. And so on the fund sources, it does list your sources, which is your revenues, and it lists your expenses, which you uses. And the main document is just to give a big picture of all the city's funds. Also incorporated in your budget is the graphs for expenses and revenues. Again, tells another picture is story of the, of the city's funds. We also added two historical columns to the, your budget, the twenty two, twenty three actual as well as a twenty three, twenty four actual. Also listed in your budget book is detail of all funds with subcategories as requested by council for your based wages and benefits personnel as well as M and O and capital projects. Again, they're all sub totaled. And lastly, we added an informational column at the end of the budget, which includes your transfers in, transfers out, and CIP. Believe you all have copies of the, of the part slide. So here, just kind of overview where we're gonna go over. So the mission, values, and statements, as well as the summaries of the all funds, general fund revenue expenses by graphs, and then we'll have the department heads present their respective departments as well overview of the CIP, which was brought at the workshop, more in detail here listed. And I'll go over the other funds, special revenue, enterprise, and debt service, and a debt service overview. And well, you can ask questions throughout the presentation or you can wait till the end, so it's up to you all. But going on to the first, again, our mission, statement, and values. As you notice, the front page of our budget book does state those words that we are building Selma into a place of prosperity, unity, and strength, as well the values of honorable ownership and relentlessly optimistic. Again, our council priorities, again, is always public safety as well as infrastructure, downtown revitalization, community engagement with customer service and staffing, and lastly, our parks and facilities. Changes from the budget workshop as we met for the council's wishes. Two things were mentioned with the improvement district contributions, which is embedded in the budget as well, and landscape and lighting for downtown. And of course, we'll review or finalize of the revenues and expenditure projections for the budget. So going on to, this is a, a graph that was added in the budget, it's all fund expenditures. So this just tells us that based on the structure, we have categorized it, we have general fund, we have special revenue funds, capital outlay, debt service, internal service column on the actual document. So we have special revenue consisting of the whole entire budget at thirty two percent. General fund is at thirty two percent, followed by enterprise at seventeen percent. Debt service is two percent, and then we have internal services at eleven percent, followed by capital at three, and the other tiers are the eight point three three and trust and agencies at zero right now. So overview on the twenty five, twenty six proposed budget, our current general fund as of right now, our revenues, adopted revenues at twenty one point two, and then we have estimated revenues at nineteen. So that revenues over expenses does show a deficit of one point nine, which incorporates the purchase of a five acre property, I believe was in June twenty twenty three, at one point four. And then our proposed budget currently shows a surplus of a hundred and thirty three dollars. So again, we are really conservative in projecting our revenues and making sure that our expenses meet sufficient for the city. Our ending fund balance estimates currently, if currently projected is fourteen point seven million of that. We do have sufficient reserves for fiscal policy of twenty percent, fifteen percent being general fund and the emergency designated of five percent. Questions on that slide?
Just want to encourage council to ask any questions as they seek that. We did have our ad hoc finance committee on Thursday. Thank you, city manager. Thank you, finance director, for meeting with council member Avalos and me. But we have a new council member, council member Osagara, who has been on Parks and Rec for twenty years, but he's never been through the full budget process. So I think if we ask questions, you know, it's probably better we get to the bottom of things now. And would you encourage council to ask any questions as they seek that? Thank you.
Okay. So, okay, so our fiscal policy states that
Let me, let me, let me go back real quick. Maybe go back and give a little dialogue in regards to the twenty percent of the reserves we have per and the five extra percent, give a little more interpretation of that, what that means. And let me go back a little more. I know there's been some questions and I know they have a head off committee, but I'd like to dialogue a little more and dive into the real, the realism of what our finances really look like rather than what people interpret they are. So if you can interpret what the twenty percent reserve means and what the extra five percent means per account, please.
Okay, yes, council member. Okay, so our fiscal policy that was adopted June twenty twenty two does state that we have to develop a reserve. So basically, what a reserve is, is we have a twenty percent reserve, a general fund. And it has to be twenty percent of the operating budget, which means expenses. So in order to calculate what we have, what it is, is if you take our expenses, for example, the twenty point, twenty point four million, and you multiply it by fifteen percent is the first just general operating, that equals three point million. And then the additional five percent according to our policy is for emergency reserve in case there's a catastrophic for the whole city. Twenty percent equates to three months' worth of operating expense in case the city, something happens to the city and we have that money reserved for that type of emergency. So total is four million together. That's just saying that based on our estimate fund balance of fourteen point seven, four million, that is reserved for emergency reserves. Just so they're making sure that we have the money in case something does happen for the city, but that's per our fiscal policy. That's only in general fund, it's not other funds, just general fund.
And the twenty percent is what is required?
Yes, per our policy, like I said, in June twenty twenty two, it is pretty common for cities to have a twenty percent reserves. And of that twenty, you have five percent for emergency designated, the remaining as restricted, fifteen percent for operating expenses. Just in case you want to keep the city going for three months where they've, something happens, you know, catastrophically for the city.
Right.
That answers your question.
So just to, just to follow up on that, is there a requirement that you only have twenty percent? Or is it sometimes good to have as much, as high a percentage as possible? Not wanting to tie up the funds, but wanting to have, you know, that reserve for instead of, I don't know, that's probably what, four or five months, that twenty percent right there, twenty percent of twelve months. What's the, what is the range, some of the cities? Because I've seen twenty, I've seen forty, I've seen, I've seen a hundred.
Yeah, I think it depends on the city and what we, what our fiscal policy was adopted based on. It's pretty common for cities due to twenty percent. I've seen twenty percent in other cities. I think I've seen thirty five percent. It all dependent what the council wishes to have as adopted policy, we can bring it back and change it. But the average is between twenty to thirty five that I've seen in other cities.
I think that might be a good thing for council to look at, potentially raising that percentage, given, I mean, when you look at the, the general fund, the trajectory, so this is not perspective, this is, this is numbers that I'm quoting right now from, it, there's been a decrease in the general fund for the last three years, as we discussed during our ad hoc meeting, from the thirty million to twenty two nine to twenty one two to twenty million four hundred thousand this year. So I think we really have to look at that reserve and make sure that we're ready for hard times. And then just, um, just to clarify, the twenty five, twenty six proposed budget, the current general fund, the net loss, the net loss of one point nine million, one hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred eighty three from last year's council, that was based on the purchase of land at McCall and Nelson, is that correct?
That is correct. McCall and Nelson, it was, I believe, rounded up to one point five million.
It was one point six million that that council paid for, correct?
I think the reso said one point four nine three. I have it, I can look carefully, just run it out, but it was over one point four million.
Okay, so about one point five million then, in total? Okay. And that was the major part of that, that loss, that net loss for last year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time?
I do. Maggie, also for the catastrophic, the emergency fund for that reserve, shouldn't that be at least six months, not just three months? I mean, I'm just questioning because I know from sitting on other boards, they've always said, just to play it safe, it's, it's good to have at least six months.
Correct.
So that it keeps it going to see what could happen, maybe it could get stabilized, you know, just in case. Three months is just a little concerning.
Yeah, that's just based on our fiscal policy that was adopted in twenty twenty two.
And just for the public who's listening, that one point six or one point five million dollar net loss, the city is attempting to recuperate that loss and to sell that land and to get that money back in the general fund, given the other obligations that the city has for the, for the budget and for capital expenditures. Thank you.
Yes, it's up averaging months of the full fiscal year, so three months divided to twelve, twelve months, it's about three point two five, point two four. So it's basically twenty percent, actually seventeen percent based on our fiscal policy.
Another question.
Bring back if you like to change it.
I have a question in regards to that. Is it, is, is the, is the amount of what your reserves are and what you actually predict to be your reserve, will it affect, does it affect the county or the state or federal when we go after and ask for fundings and we ask for monies from grants or just in general, do they, do they have a, does the Fed or the state have a actual amount of what you can, because you can realistically put into reserves and say, hey, you know what, we need this, we don't have this. Do they have a, do they have an actual, I don't know, an amount? Like a cap or something that they actually look at? And I, and I ask that because I've never asked that, but I
You mean to, for the cities to receive
So let's say, let's say we, the city, say, let's say there's a state, a county, or the federal, there's a, there's a grant out there. And, and what I'm asking is, if we go and we up our reserves and, and they, and it's, it's a need based, would that affect us? Do you know, have you ever heard of that or?
Not really. I know what you're saying. So basically, the reserves and revenues, it's just more money's coming into us as revenues, which will help our estimated fund balance. The reserves is just putting money aside.
No, I, I understand, I understand that part, but what I'm asking is, is there any, is there any federal or state, like when you ask for those, when you're asking for grants, and do they, do they look at that and they look at your reserves? And do they, do they off base like the needs? Because I know that some agencies
Population driven, I'm not sure. There's, I guess, different factors that
No, I'm just asking.
Not that I know of, other than.
Yeah, those are Got another quick question for you. Page five, debt service, twenty two, twenty three, fiscal year, that'd be twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Debt service, fourteen million, eight hundred and twenty two thousand, nine hundred and twenty five, with a general fund amount of thirty million, seven hundred and seventy three thousand, three hundred and twenty four. Was that for the pension obligation bond? That's, that's way out of whack with the other numbers.
Yeah, well, I'll do this, I'll review that on the debt service at the end, so I'll go detail every single one of those.
Real quick, so the fourteen, so you're not, so that number's not being counted twice, the fourteen million eight, like you've got debt service. 14,800, like you've got debt service as an expenditure, so you're paying down the bond, and at the same time, you're adding, your general fund's about 14 million dollars up from the previous year. Is that 14 million being added back in the general fund?
So what it is, is that if you look at, that you're right, the outstanding amount is just the outstanding amount of 14 million for the bond. We reduce it by principle as we make payments. So are you, are you referencing to the budget book?
I'm referencing your, your handout, page five, all funds expenditures. So it just looked like the 30,700 is anomalous. It's, it's, it was 16 million the year before.
Okay.
And then it goes up by about the same amount as the debt service amount. Just wondering why that debt service amount will be added to the, to the general fund.
The only debt service we have in the general fund is our 2015 obligation bond. The rest are in the other funds.
Okay. So I'll, I'll ask a follow-up question later. Thank you.
Okay, so going over our revenues by type, on this graph, this state breaks down our taxes, different taxes we receive and permits. So right now, currently, our sales tax is at 44%. Again, that's our 1% Bradley sales tax. Currently, we are, like I said, we're budgeting conservative, based on HDLs, our tax, sales tax consultant. Our property taxes at 2.4 million is indicated 12%. On that, we do receive the teeter, property monies from the county is received in January and June, and a third one, like a catchall, at the end, so it's three payments for the property tax. Then we receive the VLF, which currently is at 13%, the vehicle license and fee, currently at 2.7 budgeted. Then we have the TOT currently at 2.93. This is where we have the 6% of the TOT hotel taxes, as well as a 6% additional for the measure paid. And then going on to the licensing and permits at 3%, we have the rest, fines, forfeitures, and penalties, close to 1%, franchise fees at 5.7%. And then use of money in property, 1.35, is mostly where we have our interest income, and the remaining reimbursements. Other finances sources is really our transfers in at 4.8. Other at 0.31. Questions on the revenues? Next slide, please. Okay, going, now we're going to talk about the general fund within the department. So we can see that the graphs does indicate that is public safety, 60%, where we have fire, 20, police at 38%. Fire, our development services division's at 8.74%, community services at 5.9, almost 6%. Then we have our public works at 6%, 6.272, and internal services at 3.99%, followed by administrative services at 10%, and then finance at 4%. Again, this is just a high-level review of all the departments within the general fund. Okay, here is the, that was right there. Here's just, was on the last year's presentation, this is expenditure by type for just a personnel section. As like I mentioned throughout the book, you'll see a section for benefits and wages. This is the total of everyone. We're proposing full-time, 167, 167 full-time, 43 part-time. On this, it does indicate just the personnel section is 12, 12.5 million, 61% of the whole budget, and then followed by MNO at 13%, allocated costs at 16. We had 6% of transfers ins. Currently, our capital projects in the general fund, close to 1%, and then our debt service at 1.6%.
Just backing up one page really quick, Finance Director, police and fire, I asked the question earlier, that 14 million, did it come from the bond in the general fund? I'm looking at the expenses per police and fire. It was 6.2 million for police in 2122. It was 12,800,000. It was double that, 2223. For fire, it was 3.5 million. In 2122, it was double that, 7,810. Were those bonuses paid out, the ARPA, or what, what, and then it goes back down? Then the payroll goes back down?
It could be why the expense is high, though. That's the only thing that did happen in 2223. There was some restructuring of personnel at the time. So it does, these are actual numbers that we exported out of the system, but that does indicate that as 30.7 million.
$10 million in bonuses?
I don't know, but that's
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Our chief?
Those figures are related to the pension obligation bond. I don't know if you recall the 2223 audit presented by Jolly. You had raised some questions regarding some expenditures, some overages with regards to public safety. That sparked some questions for myself and the police chief as well at that time, and further investigation, that is, the associated costs with the pension obligation bonds. That is in our budget as an internal service charge that gets expended each fiscal year to pay off that debt.
Okay, $10 million from a pension obligation bond?
It was
It wasn't $10 million in bonuses or payroll. It was $10 million in investment in the pension, in the city's pension to pay down the CalPERS pension, is that correct?
That's affirmative, sir. I don't, I can't speak to the exact figure or dollar amount. I will say that, to my knowledge, no one in the fire service receives bonuses. In, in any case, their salaries are a figure of the, their memorandums of understanding, and it's all listed out in the budget based on salaries, overtime, and then their associated benefits within that. But there are no bonuses or anything like that. The, there was an expenditure that was listed as a one-time debt in the accounting. I don't, I'm not an accountant, I don't understand that. I did raise that same question after the 23, 2223 audit was presented to council, and that's what that figure was related to, why it's listed the way that it was. I'm unsure of, I can't speak to that. But I will say that it is nothing to do with a salary or bonus associated with our staff.
If I'm asking it, the people will be asking it. So I definitely want to get to the bottom of that. I appreciate that, that input. And the 14 million did show up two times, it looks like. It looks like it showed up in the general fund, and it looked, in the debt expenditures we just talked about. It looks like it also showed up in the general fund. And it also showed up in debt service. So it's just a, kind of a different way of handling that. In the 2223, when Mr. Jolly did present that, the expenditures were $6 million higher than it budgeted, and the receipts were $2 million lower than budgeted. So there were definitely some, some issues with that. And it's good, we're, we're getting to the bottom of that.
Jordan, I can also come back, send an email with information on 2223 if you like, get more information for you on that.
Yeah, yeah, because it's just a, it's a huge swing there, and then it goes back, the payroll goes back. So it's just strange how that was treated from an accounting perspective. Councilman Avalos, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was, on that particular note, okay, when the auditor, Jolly, you know, did the 2224 era, it was a significant jump, and the 2223 jump, you know, financially, in salaries and overtime and stuff like that. I, I was, the question I, you know, is, I know you didn't have a, the auditor should have kind of warned you on the issue, on the particular items from 20, 20, you know, 2324, that there was some significant deficit taking place. And I, and I felt that the auditor should have, should have warned you on these particular issues, because you were able to adjust it. Transitions of, you know, transferring money in and out, out of the, you know, these funds, that we had better control, you know. And I, and I, you wouldn't be in the, in a situation that we are now, you know, like, I mean, expenditure wise. And then you would maybe, you might have had to change your mind and spending the money, the 1.5 million dollars on buying the property. Because, you know, I'm, I'm looking at these numbers, guys, overall, all departments, you know. It, it was quite expenditure, 22, 23. This is, and it, it was substantial. I don't, I don't, I mean, you went from a reserve, and it downturned a little bit, and I, and now with the, all cities are, we're in what we call, not just Selma, but Fresno is, is in the situation we are in now as well. So we have to really look at our budget tight wise down the line, you know. I'm being, I'm being very frank with you guys. I've seen this before in the past, you know, being on a council, and I, I see another issue here in a different manner. So I caution you on those. Questions, bring them. There's no problem asking. But we have to watch our, our salaries and our overtime, especially overtime. I, I see the fire department, I, last time he admitted overtime, I get it. I looked at it, yes, it is. And then the bond measures too, you know, the bonds, what we have out there, they're substantial out there.
So I think, you know, we haven't had a Finance Director in two years. So I think what we're seeing is a couple of years of financial questions, if we haven't really been able to get answers to, we're asking now. So that's why I think some of these questions are cropping up from previous years. And certainly, it sounds like we're going to get to the bottom of that, but we're just, we're asking them so we can
And I think
move forward with this budget.
She's getting to the bottom, I think.
So we're going to go over department budget proposals. So I'll do the first, next slide, please, the administration portion of that. So just to quickly go over the three city councils, city attorney, city manager. So city council that starts on page 25 of the actual budget book. There is just a slight decrease from 2425, our proposed budget, 144,000. And then the next one is the city attorney, no change on that. We left the same as last year of 200,000 proposed budget, which is on page 27 of your proposed budget. And then lastly, the, the city manager's budget is on page 29. It does indicate similar than prior years, no change on that, proposed budget, 607,000. Going on to finance, so I'm happy to say that finance is fully staffed. We're proposing a $1 million proposed budget, where our budget does consist of continuing training, as well as continuing having price paid, our consultant auditors to assist us on the specialized CPA reports that we need, including, that includes the state controllers report, any new GASP pronouncement documents I needed for the audited financial statements. That's something that we're going to go right into after the budget, to start working on the 2425 audited financial statements. We're currently working with, internal with them right now. So that price paid does help tremendously to expedite the processing of the audited financial statements, so we can be on track, so we can get those, if there's any grants out there, that we have the audited financials done in a timely manner. Going on to the next one, we'll have our administrative services director to go over the city clerk.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. So I'm presenting the city clerk budget as our city clerk was not here when it was prepared, and I didn't think it was fair to her to try to explain what it was. The budget itself is at the proposed, the 209. The highlight of this is the certified municipal clerk training itself. That has not been done in prior budgets. It is very, it's important, because a new city clerk and pursuing the certified municipal clerk designation is a strategic investment in professional development that will directly benefit the city's operations, compliance, and public service standards. The CMC designation is one that it will, it's a comprehensive training, and it's in core areas of municipal clerk responsibilities, including agenda prep, records management, municipal law, elections administration, and legislative procedures. This foundational training ensures that the city clerk's office can operate with accuracy, efficiency, and in compliance with legal requirements. I am actually certified, so I do have the CMC designation that I received years ago, and I do believe it is beneficial for our new city clerk to obtain. That's the highlight of that one. Any questions?
What's entailed by the CMC designation? How much time does it take, and where is it conducted?
So it is one that the training itself is actually off-site. It's held, it's whole, it's hosted in Riverside. It is one that it's over a two-year period that it's obtained. There is four trainings that are required. Each training is four days in length. However, again, the benefit of that is not only all of the training entailed for the CMC, but also the networking opportunities available for it as well. It is one, like I said, I obtained the CMC designation. It's usually in a two-year, however, I'm very, you know, I'm very ambitious to where I actually did it in 18 months. But that was years ago. But it is one, it's usually typically a two-year process, and it is just extremely valuable for a new city clerk.
It require additional training, like continuing ed with the state of California, anything like that?
So as any position, there is continuing training. Once you obtain the actual CMC, then it's not one that you have to go to additional training, but they do offer additional. And as part of the California City Clerks Association, there are free trainings. So there is a annual membership fee that we have included as well. But there are additional free trainings that is provided with that.
So just to inquire the CMC designation, it just requires doing a two-year pro, or a two-year certification class or something, is that correct?
So the addition, the CMC requires the certificate for each four of those classes, and it's not one that's required to be obtained in order. So you can do it out of order, you can so, go like three, two, one, or, you know, like one, four, five, whatever. But there's four classes that are required. But it is one to where it's typically a two-year timeframe to obtain.
How much does it cost, the city?
So the first, each course is $1,500. And of course, that is the four-day training, and it is at a, it's in Riverside. So each course is $1,500. Right now, in the budget, I have only placed one course in there. And then we will look at it each time. If it were up to me, I would have put everything in there, but going slow.
It probably won't be expensed in one year either.
Correct.
I have a question, going back to the city council budget. I requested to the city attorney, and then it went to the city, I don't know who he sent it to. I have, I have been requesting a Brown Act and ethics training for the longest time. There was contact made by the city attorney with legal cities. They said they would do it, the city has to contact them. My only concern is, I'm due in June, and so is Mr. Avalos, and city council has to do it every two years, so theirs is coming up too. To this point, we have not received any confirmation. Legal city said they would come down and do the training, so we would like to find, I would like to find out what's going on with that.
Okay, so I contacted legal California cities. Unfortunately, they were not available for that. So I did contact Libert Cassidy. We will have an onsite training, I believe it is June 26, I believe it is. But I do have a flyer and information that will go out. It will be onsite. It will be not only the ethics training, but it will also be Brown Act. I have confirmed, I just have to confirm the date itself. Again, I believe it is June 26, and it will be from 9 to 12.
It'll be here.
And it will be here at City Hall.
And can we also invite commissioners? There's some commissioners, I've been commissioned for years, and they never received it.
So once the flyer is created, it will be sent out to all of our commissioners. But I also have plans of inviting other cities as well. We will be hosting, but our priority is our commissioners and our council members. However, we will open it up to other cities as well.
Thank you. It'd be nice if there was communication as to what's going on, because I've asked all the way to city manager, and this is the first response that I've gotten.
So I had to obtain confirmation before. However, I did obtain it just last week. It was actually, I believe, Thursday that I obtained it. But I have not been able to actually prepare the flyer, because the intent was to send out a flyer with a because the intent was to send out a flyer with a saved the date. And that has, I wanted to actually get through the budget meeting before I prepared that.
I just want to reiterate what Councilman Ozigura is saying, just communication is key on this because we have been asking for quite a while on, on the, uh, the ethics and the Brown Act training. It's been brought up several times. So appreciate you just keeping that in the loop, keeping us in the loop on that, communicating with us on when that's going to happen and so we can plan our schedules accordingly too. Thank you.
So the next one is mine as well. It's the administrative services department, which is composed of human resources, insurance, which is risk management, data processing, information technology and the insurance, which is the health benefits. With HR, the total proposed budget is six hundred and ninety-two thousand. The highlight of the human resources is that there is a proposed addition of two employees. We did briefly discuss this at the last, uh, budget with a high level. The human resources technician, should we obtain a new one? Be the volume of workers' compensation claims, liability claims and the required reporting has significantly, significantly outpaced our current staff capacity. It's currently managed in a reactive manner rather than a proactive manner, which can sometime result in delays. Uh, should we obtain the new position? We will be able to proactively manage the workers' comp, liability claims, ensuring timely documentation, follow-up and resolution. We'll also be able to serve as primary contact for the employee health benefit inquiries, improving the service quality and reducing disruptions in operations. This will also enhance compliance with state and federal regulations. Uh, should we obtain the additional office assistant, which would be upfront? We would have two people upfront because the front desk is the city's first point of contact and it plays a critical role in delivering high-quality customer service. Increased public foot traffic, a growing volume of administrative tasks and the needs for support across multiple departments have placed unsustainable pressure on a single staff member. If we add the second front desk assistant or office assistant, this will ensure consistent and professional service coverage during business hours, minimizing wait times and enhancing the public's experience. We'll be able to provide shared support for payroll processing and city clerk functions and improving cost cross-departmental efficiency. This will also offer flexibility covering lunch, lunch breaks should the city hall open during the lunch hour and high-volume periods without compromising service delivery or internal deadlines. This strategic addition will reinforce operational resilience, improve internal workflow and align with the city's mission to promote prosperity, unity and strength through reliable public service. The next fund we have are any questions on the human resources?
What's the percentage increase and what's the payroll increase that you're asking for?
That we do not know, but we can get to you.
Okay, that's two, two additional employees, correct?
Correct.
Two full-time additional employees.
Correct.
Okay, can we get that additional cost, please?
And can I ask, what's the, um, how many employees do we have for the administrative service department currently?
So administrative services is myself, which is the director. We have an HR technician, we have a payroll technician, we have an office assistant and then also our IT person. So we currently have five.
Five? Okay. Five, and how many are we supposed to have? Is that?
So I'm requesting two for an additional, the two to total seven.
And so the two positions is going to be an additional clerk?
One would be an additional office assistant, which would be upfront. And the other would be an additional human resources technician to do the risk management. And just to clarify, within the budget itself, there were two positions overall, not within my department, over the total budget that were reduced in order to, um, be able to add those positions to HR. So they're not a total, two additional, there were reductions in other departments in order to allow for those two positions.
Which, which positions were those?
Correct, yes. So the grants manager was reduced to half-time. The fire department, uh, halftime position was eliminated. And the grants manager. I guess there was a total of three. And that was, uh, part-timers that were reduced in order to get to the two.
So there's no net increase to the budget as a result of adding these two HR employees?
Correct.
Okay. What was the first one? Grants, grants manager was reduced to part-time, then assistant, the city manager, what was the third one?
Executive assistant and then the fire department, um, part-time was removed.
Fire department, part-time?
Part-timer, secretary.
Secretary, do you still have a secretary?
Uh, we have a full-time senior administrative assistant.
So you're keeping the one full-time senior administrative assistant. You're just not getting a, a part-time administrative assistant that's been eliminated.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
And moving on to the insurance risk management internal service fund, the proposed budget is two point nine. This is a budget that is provided directly from RMA. So we do not have any type of input in that. The budget itself is just the budget itself, that's what they provide us. For the data processing fund, which is IT internal services, the proposed budget is seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand. With that, there is a citywide file storage upgrade, which is proposed at a hundred thousand. That would be, would be beneficial to the whole entire city as our current shared, I'm sorry, our current shared drive is at its capacity and we need to restructure it in order to be able to effectively move forward. The next fund that we have is the insurance employee benefits fund, which is internal services. The proposed budget is one point six. We are now self-funded, so we have to ensure that the funds that we receive cover everything that we, um, our rates, our benefits, that type of thing. In order to help ensure that we do have regular quarterly health benefits committee meetings, which are composed of all of our, of representatives from each of our bargaining units and we have input in the health benefits itself. So with that, we do have continued health benefits committee meetings to ensure employees have access to the most comprehensive and cost-effective health coverage options.
I was, uh, looking at the health insurance, we changed it a couple of years ago from CalPERS to self-funded with a layer of a company, um, administering the claims. But we went from one million, one hundred thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five and twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three, um, to one million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-one and this year, twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, is that just a state of the industry or why the half-million dollar increase in two years?
So it is a state of the industry. However, it is fair to show or to say that had we stayed with CalPERS, the increase would have been more. Um, so our increase when we went from CalPERS to self-funded, it was lower than had we stayed with CalPERS. So we're not, so the previous amount in the current amount is not necessarily apples to apples. So it is one that, again, we have quarterly meetings with our health benefits committee and we do show like where we currently, had we stayed with CalPERS, what would that amount have been? So that is something that I would be happy to share with you.
Okay, great. Council good with getting that number where we would have been with CalPERS, just so we can see a, something to compare it to?
On that, on that note, there's, uh, Mayor, you know, okay, on the, funny on the insurance. Now, this, you know, it went up by, is it because cost has gone up or, or is it just a trend, it's just sometimes submit, you know, a big jump, what took place?
So again, had we stayed with CalPERS, it would have gone up. I believe at that time it was seventeen percent, which would have been way more than what we're paying now. Because we're self-funded, we actually do what we call claims reviews every quarter. And we have the ability as the city to determine cost savings. For example, one of the items that we have done, uh, we've already put that in place, is weight loss medication. With CalPERS, it's one to where it was readily available. Um, with our self-funded, we have said that it's not readily available. It is one that you have to have a prior authorization. There's different steps that you have to do in order to obtain it. Um, another thing is that, uh, for, let's say, generic medication, you know, that's one that's rarely available. But if you're wanting the brand name with CalPERS, uh, you could just go and get it. Well, now we're putting in different levels within our benefits to where if you need it, then it has to be one to where you have to have the prior authorization. You have to have, you know, the doctor's approval. It's not one that's just, I want that, so I'm getting it at a less rate. So we have more control over our plan.
Okay, one more question behind the control of the plan. Okay, to fund this plan, you know, for the all employees of the city, they have to put money aside, a substantial amount, am I correct?
So when we started the fund?
Actually, you know, to actually keep it solid for the future, solid.
So when we started the fund?
Do you have in there?
We actually so Okay, so that one I'm not able to, um, there were several different items that had happened. When, when we started the fund, we started with a sixty-five thousand dollar, I guess, like a buy-in in a way. And that was to, um, have the self-funded option. We have been, the fund itself is one to where it is, the intent is for it to grow over time. However, it is one to where, um, since we started it, we have slowly added additional layers. For example, we only had one, like, maintenance and operation cost. We have since, uh, drilled down to have it to where there's a pharmacy, there's a, um, claims, there's like, there's different layers in it. One thing that we have not been able to complete yet are all of the, um, the general ledger entries in order to put them where they need to be. So as of right now, it does show that we are at a zero to where there's no net, no increase, no loss. But we don't know that that's true and correct.
Okay, one more, well, maybe two more questions. The other, the other issue, okay, uh, on this, you know, self-funding plan, do, do we act? Do we have an actual number every year? This is what is occurring, the cost with the, um, the employees of the city. You know, do we have a number, say, hey, this year costs, you know, let's say one point two million, whatever it costs or a hundred thousand, whatever it costs, uh, is there a what I say it? And how is it? Because I'm a little concerned about this. It, it, it brings a red flag to my, my attention. Because, you know, I, I like, you know, you know, first responsibility, at the same time, I want the employees of the city not, not to worry down the road. You know, uh, I want them to say, when they retire, they have something instead of nothing. Now, that's, that's me, you know, um, because, you know, when I, when I'm up here, I says, hey, these people down there are watching the city, they're part of the, they're part of the family, it's called family, the tree. We got areas that are like a spoke on the wheel. Everybody's important. At the same time, I want to make sure that they're taken care of. Now, when they retire, their lives, their lives are happy, not stressed out. I don't want you to say, hey, down the road, I don't know how I'm going to pay this bill, I don't know what's going on, it's not covered that much. Hey, I don't want you to find your, find yourself in that situation in life. That's a, that's a bad situation, prevented health, I call prevented health in life. And I want you to be happy. Everybody up here is going to be happy. But this is, this self-funding is kind of a in my, it draws a line at me, it draws, I'm not, I'm not comfortable.
Can I ask?
If you look at page two forty-four, just real quick, Councilman Mayor Proton, two forty-four of your packet, it details
Yeah, it's a
Correct?
Yeah, it does.
Details, the insurance, help us out here, dental claims, selected employees' health insurance, vision claims, long-term disability, and then it has insurance total one point five eight eight for twenty-two, twenty-three. Then if you toggle over to twenty-five, twenty-six, it has two million, nine hundred and seventy-seven, eight forty-three. So that is, is that the expected claim amount plus the premium? Or what is that number? Because like you say, it's, it's zeroed out, all those claim amounts are zeroed out and then they're zeroed out for the twenty-four, twenty-five adopted. So just educate us a little bit.
So Mayor, um, on the internal service funds, uh, yes, the employees' insurance is self-funded. So we are projecting one point six as, uh, operational expense. So we're doing a zero-out or clean-out of our funds. We're combining the insurance and the insurance employee benefits. So therefore, um, it does show that the employee benefits is at net zero with the one point six, um, expenses. But then if you look up on top where there's a seven hundred fund, uh, which is insurance, currently it does show a two point nine, uh, operational, uh, and then two point nine expenses, leaving a fund balance of six hundred and seventy in that fund for future expenses in the employee benefits and insurances.
Okay, so is that reserved out on the, the city balance sheet as a reserve for amount available to pay claims? And is there a stop-loss on the insurance, on the, the self-funded health insurance that after those claims hit a certain amount, the re, the company that's running the policy will start paying?
Correct.
And what's our stop-loss?
Stop-loss is sixty-five thousand per employee. Yes.
Per claim or just per employee?
Per, um, actually it's per claim, so sixty-five thousand per claim. Um, so in last year, so the twenty twenty-four fiscal, um, calendar year, we had, uh, two employees that met the stop-loss. And so, um, everyone else was well under, under it. So actually for twenty-five, actually in twenty-four, we had a fifty-five thousand dollar stop-loss. It was recommended by the health benefits committee to, um, raise it. So again, we meet quarterly, we review the claims. The amount that was provided in the budget was one to where we do have a broker that we project what our claims are going to be for the next fiscal year. So the amount that is in the budget was based on not only our claims, but also the benefit of the broker's experience itself. Um, one thing that I do have to let you know as well is that the city pays ninety percent of employees' benefits. So ninety percent, employees pay ten percent. So when we do the transfer in from
It's for individual and group?
Correct.
Families too.
For individual and group.
So that's one thing I just definitely want to let you know because that amount is very high. Um, but it is one that's bargained in, you know, bargained within each, uh, unit itself. But the city does pay ninety percent of health benefits for all employees.
Well, CalPERS didn't have that.
Well, the city did pay ninety percent, um, because that one is a bargained, uh, item. The city offers that, so whether it was CalPERS or self-funded, the city is still paying ninety percent.
In your experience, do most cities pay ninety percent?
You're really putting me on the line here.
Just asking for your opinion.
No, in my experience, based on the other cities that I have worked with, this is one of the highest, um, that we have. However, the benefits itself are very, I call them rich benefits because prior, having CalPERS, the benefits were not as rich. So paying a lower amount for plans that were not wonderful, I guess, is, um, was how it was done. However, when we moved to self-funded, their plans are extremely rich. They are, when I say rich, the benefits are, are there, they're abundant. However, the premium is still extremely high for the city to pay ninety percent of that.
So the city's printing the cost for most of the employee and the family health benefits expense. It was ninety percent because the benefits themselves under CalPERS weren't that great. But the city just elected to continue that ninety percent coverage even under the self-funded plan, which offers better coverage than, uh, CalPERS.
And that again is MOU-based, so it is one based on the ninety percent. Also, in the personnel rules, it does state the ninety percent. And that was based on the older rules. And that was based on the older rules that was incorporated into the new rules.
So when those MOUs are renegotiated, that 90% is potentially a bargaining point between the employee unions and the city?
Potentially, yes.
And then you mentioned also that going self-funded, they have to go with the generic brand. And that's the difference. When you're paying, you should be able to have the option. People want the name brand, they don't want to go generic, because sometimes generic just doesn't work for them. So how are we saying that our benefits are better with, without CalPERS?
With the fund itself is that you have the ability to have a name brand, but you're not going to pay the same amount as with it a generic. So I'm making it up, because I don't know exactly what our numbers are. But let's say a generic is a $10 copay, but a brand could be a $25 copay. Should you choose to pay that $25, you can receive that, but you're not going to get it for $10. Whereas previously, it was, you know, like, anything is $10. And again, I'm making that rate up. But it's, we're fashioning our plans to where there is, if the generic works, then that's beneficial for you, because that's a lesser fee. But if you choose to go to the, the name brand, then you are paying a little bit higher. But that's your choice, it's not a requirement. And that, again, is one, it's, we do have a broker, and our broker is recommending these changes as well. It's not one to where we're just saying, like, well, let's just make it higher. We also ask, okay, what are other cities doing? What are other, you know, we look to see what are other self-funded plans doing as well?
If I may ask, who's your broker?
Our broker is with, it used to be Burnham Benefits, but now it is, they just changed their name about a month ago. I don't know what their new name is, but it was, it is Burnham Benefits.
Yeah, because I, I work with Fresno County, and I was in their, I was the chair for their benefits committee. And we always negotiated with the brokers wherever it was. And a lot of times, we found out that a lot of stuff the broker was selling us wasn't the best thing for our members, you know? Like, they were selling us the, the, some medicine to, to cure, can't remember what the heck it was, for 100,000. Then we did some research, and we found out that other companies are, are other cities and whatnot, counties were getting it for half of that, so we said, hey, you know?
The one thing that I, I pride myself in is that everything that I do for the city, I do for the betterment of the city. Not just like myself, or not, you know, I'm, I'm truly one to where I'm wanting to improve. Everything that the broker brings to me, I research. So I don't just take it at face value. I actually reach out to other employees at other cities that are in the health benefits, and I'll ask them, like, what are you doing here? How is this? What is?
And it wasn't meant as a put-down, I'm just saying that if you ever need help, I have a lot of experience in dealing with brokers. I mean, we've been through, we used to represent 2,500 employees just in my department. So Fresno County is huge compared to our city, of course. But if you ever need any help, let me know.
Noted, thank you.
It's a major line item, and it's double from 2223, including the RMA, including the auto and the workers' comp and all that. But insurance is a major, major line item, so we really have to keep a handle on that. I mean, 3 million is, is 15% of the general fund. That's definitely a big, a big percentage. Any, anything from the broker on increases in the future for the coming years? Is there anything city needs to be aware of and start accruing now?
So the rates that we have right now, so we actually are calendar year, which means our new rates go into effect as of January. We will not have any type of new rate discussions until September. So we won't know anything until September, should they go up. But again, we do meet quarterly. It is one to where we look at all of our claims that come in. We look to see, are there any adjustments that are required? Because we do want the fund to be self-sustainable, and we also want it to grow. The intent of going self-funded is to be able to sustain the benefits. As Councilmember Avalo said, we want them to be sustainable for many, many years, not just, you know, two or three down the line. But we're looking at, you know, like, 15, 20. This is something that can definitely be of a huge benefit to the city. And should it grow, it is one thing that, what I envision for the city is maybe within like another five to six years, is that we have our own onsite clinic for employees. That's what I'm looking for. But also, I want to ensure that it is sustainable. And again, like I said, everything I do for the city is for the betterment of the city.
No argument. The RMA for the property casualty bears looking at too. I think there was a talk a couple of years ago about shopping that as well. If you look at these rates, I mean, they're for the workers' comp, even though the industry is down, they're double, you know, since 2223. So it might be worth taking with, now that you're gonna get a little more help in your department, might be, it might be worth putting that out to bid and finding out. RMA isn't the only game in town for cities. And it might be good to, to get a quote on that, unless you're already doing so.
That's definitely something that we can take into consideration and move forward with. One thing I have to as well state is that the amount of workers' comp claims and liability claims itself have a direct response to the increase. We do have a higher rate of workers' comp claims and liability claims. And so it is a little bit higher than other cities, which I have seen in the budget itself with RMA.
What's the, what's the factor? Is it 105, 110 for, for the city of Selma? There's like a mod that's applied to each city, from what I remember from RMA, depending on claims experience for each one. I think it's capped at 110 or 15, 1.1 or 1.95.
I would have to get back to you on that one, I don't know that one offhand.
I think that's the beauty of being in the RMA, is having it, it smooths out the loss experience.
Just one more question. I just want to know, do you ever get input from the employees and ask if they're satisfied with being self-funded or going CalPERS? Do you guys ever do some kind of study on that?
So we did it before, actually, what we did before we went self-funded is we did the, not a study as far as customer satisfaction, but it was more so based on the rates itself. We knew going self-funded that there would be a significant increase, I'm sorry, decrease in the premiums itself, which was true and correct. But also, we knew going self-funded, the plans that we provide would be richer than what CalPERS provided. CalPERS provided, I believe, like, let's say, 10 different plans. We narrowed it down to four. We have four plans that we provide that are much healthier than what CalPERS provided. I do, I can tell you that one of the big pushbacks were Kaiser employees, or those that went to Kaiser. However, Kaiser was not an option for us, because Kaiser went up. I believe that one was 15%. And in order for us to move to Kaiser alone, then the majority of our employees would have to go to Kaiser. So it was not a benefit that we could have as a standalone plus our Anthem. It would have to be all Kaiser or nothing. And I believe we only had about 20, I believe it was like 20, 25 employees in the whole entire city that went to Kaiser. Everyone else went somewhere else.
What happened to Kaiser?
So Kaiser went away. Everyone had to transition through a blue shield, correct?
Point there is, they lost, some people lost their doctors then, who were with Kaiser. They had to find new doctors.
Yes.
Is that a potential to get a survey now that it's been a couple of years? Is it a potential for your department? Again, you're gonna get some more personnel, some more help. Is that a possibility for you to do a survey of the employees to see how they, how they like the new, the new health insurance plan? They've had a couple of years to settle into it.
So this is our second year going into it. Usually after a two-year timeframe is when it's, I guess, not acceptable, when it's more realistic. Because if you have it after a year, there's, you have transition pains, I call them. Because you will have some people that require to have new, new doctors, obtain, you know, new referrals, you know, those types of things. Usually after a two-year period is when it's more settled in.
And that two year is gonna be a.
The end of this year, at the end of 25.
Calendar year.
Correct.
And then I remember, we had a, we had a room full of retirees from the city when the city moved from CalPERS to the self-funded plan. They were, there was various concerns. I'd like them to be included on the survey too.
And also, just to let you know, on the Health Benefits Committee, we do have a retiree represented. We do have a representative on the committee itself. And so this person, the representative, does keep in contact with all the retirees.
That, if someone would like to come to a council meeting in the future and let us know, that'd be great. Give us some experiences, some personal testimony.
After, so would that be after we do the survey?
Yeah, after the, during the, the survey time. If anybody would like to weigh in on it. Quite frankly, I haven't heard really good or bad from, from the employees or retirees.
You know, just a comment on the Kaiser deal, through the committee that I was in, Kaiser was always higher. So the number of people that were on Kaiser was kind of, was lower, of course. But then after a while, they decided, hey, let's do the same thing. So whatever Blue Shield, Anthem, and all the others were charging, Kaiser was charging the exact same thing. So, so people started, more people started moving, more people, you know, because Kaiser is the ones, like, you want a clinic? Kaiser is the one-stop shop, they're right here, right down the street, you know? To where my wife is on the plan that I have, I have, I'm still with Kaiser, because I'm Medicare now. But her, she has to go to Ridley, she has to go here, she has to go there for all the services. Through with Kaiser, you go to one place and bam, you're done.
And that is something that we'll definitely take into consideration. We did look into Kaiser prior to moving to Blue Shield, but they will not take a standalone. So we would actually not be able to, let me rephrase that. We would not have been able to have the same rates as what like CalPERS would. CalPERS went up significantly high. When we approached them, their rates were way higher. I mean, they were just, it was just not, it was unphantable. I mean, it was just the, the rates were just really high. So at the time, Kaiser was not, not an option. However, one thing I do have to say about, the one-stop shop is wonderful. However, for those, you have many of our employees within the city of Selma that don't live in Selma. They work here, which is wonderful. But what happens when you have an employee who lives in Hanford or Visalia and they get sick? Actually, that's not a really good one. But let's say you have someone who's not close to a Kaiser facility, then now you're limiting them. And we don't want to limit their, their, well, towards the medical care.
Just, you know, I'm a stickler for data. And Selma, a lot of the people from Fresno come to Selma.
In order to have a Kaiser.
Because of the, because less weight and everything. There's, we have a lot of people from Hanford and other those areas, because why? Because a lot of the sheriffs are Fresno County, right? So they're, they live in different areas. So this place here, I mean, it's a wonderful facility, and I tell you, we're getting more and more people from out of, out of different areas coming in. Because you go to the pharmacy in 10 minutes, you're in, you know, you go to Fresno Pharmacy, you know, and now they're building a wonderful facility, branding facility for Kaiser, right across the way from, from the hospital there, so. Jump to miniature. But anyways, I'm just saying, you know, it's something to look at, because they do offer good service.
Again, it's noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a good time for a break, everybody? We'll take a five-minute break, and we'll come on back. We'll take a five minute break and we'll come on back. Hey, we're just missing the city manager.
Yes, sir.
We good to go? Yeah, go ahead, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to just go over the police department's budget. If you'll notice this year, we have typically in the past, we had three divisions. There are police administration, police operations and police support. What we've, what I've asked for, it was, it was great getting Maggie on board and having a finance director. And sitting down and talking about how we can make our budget more transparent and easier for not just myself, but yourself, the council. And for our citizens to read. As the department grows, right, staffing grows and costs grow. However, we're able to, that also provides itself some opportunities to help offset those costs. So what we've asked for is to break down the department into police administration, police operations, police support, code enforcement, dispatch and animal services. So each division has its own coding and we're able to track expenses much better than in the past. Riley? So thi- this year, what we're proposing in police administration is $520,000, 309. That's, that's going to represent the police chiefs, myself. I have an assistant and we are also throwing in an administrative sergeant into that role. As well as other operating costs, which are pretty de minimis as you compare them to the other divisions. Did council have any questions? Mr. Mayor, this, this is a new format for us, so if you have any questions, just let, let me know because I, I'll just keep going.
Keep going.
All right. So the next, the next fund is our police operations. That is, police operations are, are bread and butter. Those are the guys out on patrol, working 24/7, responding to calls, developing investigations. This year's budget is $3,905,033. Be, be a.
A question.
Yes, sir.
How many police officers do we have?
We're, we're budgeted for 40 sworn, sir. Now that 40 sworn gets divvied up into these different divisions. And I'll give you a good example. Myself and the administrative sergeant would go into the police administration. We'll get into police support. That's a commander, some sergeants and then investigators and then people that we have in specialty units. And then everything else is really operations. So I, I, to, to tell you exactly how many off the top of my head are in operations, I couldn't say. But, but totally, a majority of the, of the, of our sworn are in operations. That's, that's our, it's about 25. If that, if that's, it's an approximate number.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
25 officers? How many vacancies do we have?
Currently, we're at four vacancies. But that's not just officers, council member, that's.
The total department.
Supervisors also.
That's the total department, four vacancies in the whole department?
Yes.
Hey Rudy, I'm asking a question. Do you have vacancy in a canine as well?
Not, not really, sir. Canine is, we don't have a, a positions identified as just canine officers. It's more of an ancillary duty, just depending on who wants a canine and our availability to get them is, is kind of.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So it looks like the trend has been away from canines other than as drug dogs?
No, no, yeah, like, we're, we're trending away from apprehension dogs. I think there's legislation that is continually coming down the pike every year. Which will drastically affect how we deploy those animals. And based on legislation cost, we, we, we think it better served to use those dogs as detention, detection dogs. And I apologize, I've been in bed for two days, super sick, so if I am getting in and out, I apologize. But, but yeah, so.
For being here today.
No, yes, sir. It's, it's extremely important. But yeah, the, I, I, I think that detection dogs, based on legislation, cost, effectiveness and efficiency within the department i- is the, the direction we should be going in.
The reason why, you know, the reason I ask you that Rudy is, you know, back in the days, you know, when you, canines were, you know, were effective. They used to do a, maybe once a month, they used to go to the school and do a sweep. You know, you know, the kids have their backpacks out and they do a sweep and control the activity. And that way it sent a message to the streets and hey, if you're going to go to school and try to sell this stuff, you're going to get caught. You know? And I, you know, I'm a believer on the dogs, you know? The reason why, because I've seen the tools of the animals work. Because you know, when I was managing, you know, the property over here, the old county building, we used to bring the sheriff department and the, and your canines to put dog training in that building there. And they're very effective animals. And other agencies came around to do the training there in that empty building. Because I like what I saw, what the animals do. They're, they're a tool in itself. I mean, two things take place. It's a safety for the officer. You could, the dog could pick the drug up real quick. The officer has, he responds real quick with, you know, situations like that. As an officer, you know, coming to a scene, he's, he's not detecting the drug. He's taking a while to either search, but the dog will pick it up real quick. So it's a bit, it's a little game changer a little bit in law enforcement.
Correct, and that, that's why we're kind of leaning and going towards a detection route, sir. The one thing about the schools is, and I think a lot of departments are trending away from detection at schools is because of the liability, search and seizure, viol- concerns, I should say. And as, as, as you know, liability is always at the forefront of what we do. So we're just trying to ensure that we have separation between those two worlds to reduce our liabilities. So, yes, sir. It's kind of, but, but we still train often with our dogs, we, as mandated by law. Again, right now, I think we only have one canine deployed. We're looking to purchase another canine. So we're just, I believe the Selma Police Foundation is, has another fundraiser coming down the pike. So we'll hopefully get some funding through that organization. But yeah, I, I, I love canines, I really do. It's just, you know, weighing all the different worlds that we have to abide by and still be successful with our efficiency.
And the reason why I'm saying that Rudy, long time ago, when I first come to council, you know, a chief of police like yourself, like yourself, I'm not picking on you, okay? I, first time I seen the stun gun work on an individual and I was in a ride along. And I told myself, whoa, that's the way to go for every officer in a situation. Because two things I looked at. Because the liability and the safety of the officer. Because two things, I don't want the officer physically get in a fistfight with a guy that's maybe got out of prison. You know, weightlifter or whatever, two people are going to get hurt. They're both going to get hurt. And they're both going to end in the hospital and one's going to be on, both of them are going to be on workman's comp, all right? One's going to be in jail, one's not, right? But the idea, I look at those angles, for the safety of the, of the officer on the street, okay? That's why I'm a firm believer in some guys protecting this, you know, two people. I want to protect the officer, but also I want to protect the criminal as well. Get him off the street without, without any injury, okay? And without the injury to the officer too, in a fistfight. So just word for thought.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate that, Councilor Ables. If. So going on to the next division is our police support division, which is encompasses a, a support commander. He oversees all of our investigations unit, our SROs, our task force members and property evidence. Any community service officers, sorry, community service officers, which we are looking to add part-time positions, just a few. So that's, that's our police support division. Next is, and, and that's $1,745,563. The, the next division is our code enforcement division. We are expected to, our estimated expenses, 204,266 for that division. And our next division is our dispatch or communications division, which is 861,143. Those are our, five of our six divisions. If council has any questions, and I hope I didn't rush through that. I just, I didn't see anybody look up, so I just continued going.
Rudy, on dispatch, how many you have on dispatch right now?
We have seven dispatchers, sir.
Seven dispatchers, okay.
And, and a. I know we just changed the title. It's a record, basically a records dispatch supervisor. And, and again, that, that position is for expanded growth in the future. So that we have some redundancies built in within the organization as we move forward. If I can go to the next slide? Our, our last division is our animal services division, which is a proposed budget of 715,999. That is all the personnel, operating costs. Again, like every other division, built-in insurances. It, it escapes my mind right now, our, not our impact fees, but our, our internal service fees as well. Which is maintenance of facilities, things of that nature. All, all that's built into the 715,999. Which is, which is a different number than last year's. I think last year, we kind of just threw a budget together to get that program up and running. Right now, we've, we're a little over year in it, so now we're able to charge charges better. Kind of, a new finance director on how we identify those charges so that we can be more transparent and clear. So that, that is the animal services fund.
Chief, I noticed that.
Yes, sir.
Are you done? Is it okay?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
The animal license fees are zero, projected at zero for this year. Are we not pursuing as a city, and that's not your bailiwick, but maybe finance could look at that. Are we pursuing animal licenses for, for dogs? I know cats have never.
Mayor, thi- this year, I'm, I'll just be, full, full. Our experience has been getting the billing out has been extremely delayed. There's, could, could be some confusion. So what we, additionally, I truly feel that we should revisit those fees. Because I believe it's like $10 for someone that lives in town and, or 10, $10 for, if you have a license, $20, if you don't have a license. I just think that there has to, and it's not indicative of, of the cost, the staff time to, to. Collect those fees, right, sir? So I, I think that we should probably revisit those fees.
I think Councilman, um, Trino had a question.
You know, I want to go back really quick on the, and it's probably going to be the finance that I'm going to ask here. Going back to the dispatch, what's the residual we get back on the cities that you're actually working with?
I, I, I can tell you that number. And, and in those, in these budgets, right, that's the expense of, of that 861 for dispatch. We're getting 209 from the city of Parlier. So that offsets our operating costs significantly.
So, so that's another question. What in dispatch, are we just doing Parlier or are we doing any other?
Currently, we're just with the city of Parlier. I know other cities have approached us and we're having those conversations, but those, those conversations take time.
And we're having, and we received 209 for the dispatch, correct?
Yes, sir.
What's the residual in the animal shelter for the two cities?
Currently, if we continue the contracts that we do have, we would be, a- as, as it were today, we'd bring in an extra $78,000 to offset that cost.
Okay, right, that's all I want.
That's just concerning Rudy, because we went from 350. And then we went to 519 last year and now to 745, I mean, that's extr-.
Councilmember, I, I, I don't disagree, you know, the, the internal service fees, you know, salaries and such. But what, what I will say is that, you know, we're having to make difficult decisions as council members, as department heads, as citizens, correct? Keeping and maintaining the amount of animals that we keep every month drastically, drastically increases our costs, right? And, you know, it, to get dogs adopted out, getting, you know, connected with rescues and things of that nature. That, that's enormous amount of labor that goes into that, right? And then making sure that dogs are being cared for, you know, twice a day, they're being walked, they're being fed. So that they are, they have good temperament so that we can get them adopted out and not put us, not create liability for ourselves, right? I know recently we just had a dog go out to rescue and they, they, the rescue had to bring the dog back because he was just too aggressive with other animals. He had snipped it at the handler and, you know, so those are things. And that, that's just, that could have just been the dog's temperament, you know? Or it could have just been, you know, a result of long-term kenneling. You know, it's hard to, hard to get into those, you know, why these things happen. But, you know, keeping that many amount of dogs is going to increase our operating costs, right? Just the more animals we have, it, it costs more and takes more labor, you know, so.
I mean, I'm just going to be honest, I've been very vocal in regards to the animal shelter and regards to all the, the complaints that we receive from our citizens. And we continue to get complaints. I mean, that just doesn't go away. And I've already asked, I'd like to see Kingsbird's contract and Fowler's contract for this year.
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off, Councilor.
I just want to make sure, I want to look at that and see the, what we're receiving is not, I, I don't think it's going to be worth us continuing. If we can't take care of our own backyard, how can we take on other animals? Other cities' animals or their problems. We need to take care of Selma first and that's what we're here for. So I'd like to see and get those contracts as soon as we can.
We have those contracts readily available, Councilmember. We've not to be, to, for, we've not approached the other cities to renew those contracts based on council's comments and kind of the direction that we're going. I asked to sit down with council to talk about how we move forward with regards to those things. I think we're just waiting for, to sit down with the city manager and talk about, you know, how to move forward. What, what I will say is we only entertain those agreements because it was, there were agreements that were set in place with the prior vendor. And we just want to be good neighbors and the monies that was being given to those. Uh, and the monies that was being given to those prior vendors was, I think, total twenty-five thousand dollars. We, we've increased those rev, we've increased those costs to seventy-eight thousand dollars. We've tripled, uh, what was normally, what was normally being brought in just to be good neighbors. Again, it's the council's decision and whatever, whatever direction you wanna go. That, but it's gonna require a conversation because we're getting to that point where we have to have that conversation with these other cities. We've already had them, um, kind of informal conversations on what next year looks like. Uh, we do, you know, per, per, um, current, uh, contracts, we do have to give them notice and, and so we, we really do need to sit down and have that conversation. And I, I'd appreciate to have that sooner than later so that we can make some decisions. But what, but what I will say is, based on the number of dogs that come in from these other cities and what we brought in total, our operating costs are, are enormous because of the amount of animals we have every month. Which is on average forty to fifty animals a month. Um, and that, that is gonna drive costs. And speaking with other, um, cities that have animal services, uh, on average, they have twelve to twenty dogs a month. And they keep their number at that, at that, that population at that number and their costs are, are much less than ours. Now, the, the reality is though, they don't break down internal service fees and, and salaries for all those different people within a division. That's why, uh, we, we did this, this way so that I could track exactly what that division costs us, each division, right? Um, to see what, you know, what expenses are, what revenues are and what it costs to operate. And then we, then we look at, you know, if we wanna reduce operating costs, okay, where, where, where do we make that, that adjustment? If we're gonna reduce personnel, that's, that's, that's council's decision, no problem with that. But then if we're gonna reduce personnel, we're not gonna have that same personnel to service that population, right? And, and so we have to make those, all those, all those adjustments have to be kind of, uh, thought throughout the entire program, right? And, and.
Well, I have a question. How many people are employed at the shelter right now?
Currently, we have, I believe it's five, five, five full-time. We just brought on three, we just lost one.
How many ACOs we plan to have from the?
We, we only have one ACO full-time, one part-time ACO. And, uh, you know, i- if, you know, a lot of last year and its first year of running was getting the facilities up and operationally feasible for, for, uh, expectations and, um, kind of re, re developing the program with regards to policy procedures, things of that nature.
So you only have one part-time ACO or one part-time?
One, one part-time animal control officer and then one full-time animal control officer.
Cause I think it'd be nice to, uh, someday have two ACOs full-time, cause, uh, there's a lot of dogs out there, a lot of dogs.
Okay, you know, this is, I would really like to have an offline conversation if that's okay, Mayor and council members. I think that there's, this is a, a bigger issue that needs to be kind of tackled o- offline. Uh, because there's so many variables that go into this program. Um, and, and are creating issues that we're seeing with regards to cost that, that are beyond the city of Selma. And, and I'm not, I'm not talking about Kingsburg or Fowler, just beyond the city of Selma. So, and I think that, that.
When I brought it up is because, um, the seven fifteen, does that include the lease of the van? Does that include, um?
That's everything, sir.
The director at a hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I think we are, um, taking steps to eliminate the director position at the next council meeting to consider that as a council. So that we can have a little more realistic wage scale for an animal shelter. I think that there was a push by the city just to staff a couple of years ago, just to get people in there. And, um, it was, um, the approach was top dollar to get people in here. And I think now that we've had a year and a half, we've had a little more seasoning to see that, you know, it's more than that. And that, that people know about the shelter and what we're, what we're doing here and trying to accomplish. Which is a place where we bring the animals in, keep them safe and then get them out to rescue and adoption. I don't like seeing on Facebook these constant Swords of Damocles hanging over the dogs to, uh, and I don't wanna see it used as a tool to get dogs out to say, well, we're gonna put them down if you don't come out next week. I, I don't think, because it loses its effectiveness after a while. People go, okay, well, the week came and gone and you didn't put those dogs down. So I think we need to use that judiciously as an animal shelter on the Facebook page. To, uh, if they're gonna be put down because for behavior reasons, then that's, that's another story. And then we need to approach that through behavioral issues and liability, that's a liability issue. But in terms of just euthanizing for space, I don't think anybody wants to do that. And I don't think that's the policy of the city. And if it's, if it is, we will clarify that and change that. Because the policy of that shelter should be to take care of these animals until we can get them out to, to adopt to good families or to, uh, to rescues and whatever we need to do that, we, we will do it. And it doesn't just involve throwing money at it. It involves making contact after contact in the community among rescues and among the, uh, the, the actual, um, transporters out there. And that's happening. It's happening right now. I mean, it's, it's growing and it's happening. Um, just from a note, we will have an offline discussion about, you know, the details of this, cause there's, it's, it, there's so many details. There's a lot, there's a lot to this. And it's been put on the PD's plate and that may change too in the future. So we'll see about that one.
We would appreciate that, Mayor.
Thank, thank you, Chief.
Also, uh, on the lease of the van, um, there's an opportunity, and I don't know if this is the place to bring it up, but there's the opportunity to buy, uh, a used, um, transport vehicle. We looked at the one that they're using right now. It's, it's pretty sad, to tell you the truth.
It's just a van, you know, and there's an ACO vehicle that could be purchased pretty, uh, pretty inexpensively. That could be, that would actually have, um, crates in the back that are heated and cooled. You know, rather than just sort of putting them in a crate in the back.
Yeah, cause we asked, how do you trans- transport deceased animals? Oh, we just put them in a bag and throw them in the back.
But we have a good advisory committee now. We're, we're getting a handle on this again as the, as the citizens. We went from a couple of years ago, hearing, oh, you know, three hundred and sixty, you know, thirty thousand bucks a month. That's incredible. We need to get rid of second chance animal shelter. That's way too much cost. And here we are at seven hundred and twenty thousand on the budget. So I think we all realize there were other factors a couple of years ago in that decision to get rid of second chance. But again, we've turned the corner. We've had changes in our city and I think we're more unified than we've, we've ever been. So I think in our shelter is a symbol of that. And we're gonna continue to unify our city with our administration to provide top quality services, you know, for, at the, at the animal shelter. I think we're headed in that direction. But as Councilman O'Segara said, that's a, that's a really important thing is to transport those dogs safely, get them licensed, have adoption events, have outreach events. Um, we'll have more to say about that at the next council meeting on the description of, um, uh, of the personnel at the animal shelter. And it's again, nice to have that advisory committee so we're able to kind of synthesize past and present on this.
So i- in the, in the previous, um, slides, Mayor, members of the council, you didn't, there was really no highlights, which was really just a status quo budget with the personnel that we have. In, on our measure, measure S, uh, fund, uh, our proposed budget's three million, five thirty-two, zero one nine. Uh, of that, what we're, uh, part of that is the vehicle lease of eighty thousand. We, on the vehicles we took, uh, possession of last fiscal year. We would, we're hoping to do another five vehicles in this upcoming fiscal year just because our fleet is old, deteriorating, uh, and vehicle maintenance and expen- uh, is, is extremely expensive. Additionally, we're looking, uh, there's also, uh, a vehicle lease payment of sixty thousand dollars. That's for our administrative or investigative vehicles that our investigators drive, uh, while they're out doing the things that investigators do. So that's, that's the difference, the difference between those eighty and sixty thousand. Also is a proposed forty-five thousand dollar, uh, upgrade in our camera system to add, uh, ALPRs or automated license plate readers. That technology, we believe, will help us make us, uh, more efficient. Also, we will just share those technologies and datas with cities surrounding us as well as some of our bigger businesses in town. We also have a thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, lease payment on our MDT patrol cars, which is a mobile data transient. It's our second payment, we have three more years of that payment after this fiscal year. Also, we're looking to upgrade our police tasers. Our current tasers are about ten to eleven years old. They don't even make those tasers anymore. So anything, any, anything that, uh, we do, if there's a damage, we have to buy refurbished parts for those tasers. The new tasers that we're looking at will also auto-sync with our body worn cameras, which is a phenomenal upgrade. Um, and will just make it easier for evidence and, and things of that nature. As we, uh, you know, cause we continue to look at, uh, all different aspects of our, um, department on how we make it more efficient and to ensure that we're, uh, reducing liabilities, that we're operating efficiently, effectively for our community members. So, um, that, that, uh, police taser, um, and I'll bring that forward if the council approves, right? That's a five-year amortized, uh, cost to purchase basically forty or thirty-five, um, tasers. That being said, we should be able to get ten years out of them. So we're looking to amortize the cost over five years, so we don't have to pay a big chunk all at once. And then our police body cameras, again, this year's operating, uh, budget payment is seventy thousand dollars, uh, for that.
Back to the leases, Chief. Police vehicle lease eighty, police vehicle lease five new vehicles. Are we going through local vendors to lease those vehicles?
So we've met with local vendors, Mayor. I, I think that, um, I just got, uh, forwarded to another local vendor. Because, uh, you know, the, the difficulty with, with that, it looks like is the budgeting portion of it. And really, what, what this vendor has allowed us to do, enterprise, is amortize those costs over five years. Uh, and then build in all the, the, the services to outfit them, to coordinate all those things. As well as when the vehicle's up on the lease, getting that vehicle back out into the market so that we can get the most monies for that vehicle. Um, because the reality, sir, is that we're always buying vehicles. The, the, the work, the, the, the where these guys put on the cars, it's, uh, it's, it's astronomical, right? They're driving twenty-four, seven, they're driving fast, slow and down. They're not, you know, it's, it's like, uh, when you buy your kid a car. He never appreciates until he makes a payment on his own, right? So, um, you know, that, that's, that's the reality of it. But, but just the, you know, as our city grows, um, those expenses will grow. And, and we're, especially with, you know, the infrastructure developments that are going on board. Uh, we're gonna be having, we're gonna have, our population's gonna grow. Our geography, uh, service geography is going to grow. So, um, making sure we have a good fleet that is, uh, cost-effective will be crucial to be able to provide those services to our community. So right now, that, that, and I hope I can get off on tangent. I'm sick. I apologize, Mayor.
No problem.
But, but, um, to answer your question, it seems like that could be a, um, a difficulty for those vendors, those local vendors, is to, uh, amortize those costs over five years.
So what they should have is, uh, Farnie and, uh, Selma Auto Mall should get, should get a shot at bidding on that. If enterprise is the lowest, then, then that's the way it goes. But they need to have, eh, the, as you heard from the council, we want our local vendors. And the reason is, our, most of our sales tax comes from our, from our auto sales. So we wanna make sure that we at least give a shot to the, to the local auto dealers. That is, um, that is policy of the city. And I understand if, um, you know, the enterprise comes out the best, but with, that it needs to be made with a full understanding that we wanna give every chance, every opportunity to Selma Auto Mall and to Farnie, equal on an equal bet. I don't really care who, who gets it, but it has to be local because they also employ local people. Enterprise is a fine company. They have a local presence, but not as much as those two auto dealerships. And they don't contribute as much, not nearly as much in terms of sales tax as those auto dealers do. So that is a word to the wise. You've heard from the, from the, from the city council that we, uh, we, this council didn't agree with the decision to just go with enterprise for all the departments. Maybe it would have made sense. It would have just been PD, given how you're presenting it. But it didn't, it didn't make sense for every single department all at once. Maybe in the future, we'll see what happens. But, um, just wanna reiterate that, that those local dealers get preference in this.
Mayor, we have, just, just, you know, we have met with local dealers, so we are meeting with them. We're giving them the information that we can give them, um, and ask them to PR request other, other data. Because I think that legally, we have to do that. Uh, so we are, we are meeting and cooperating with them and giving them the data. Again, they, they've got to crunch the numbers and, and, and do, but to, to your point, sir, we've not officially put anything out for bid yet because we're, we're coming to you to see if, if that's okay. So if it's okay, then, then we'll put to the packet together and push it out for local vendors, all vendors, or whatever the case may be. So we can, we can get best pricing and, and, uh, move forward, sir.
Right.
So just so I'm clear, Chief, you're saying you need five vehicles, five new vehicles at eighty thousand per vehicle, is that correct?
No, that, that would, so currently, our lease payment for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, on the five patrol vehicles that we got, our estimated payment is going to be eighty thousand dollars for the year. So if I, if I buy five new vehicles and get them outfitted, we're gonna spend four hundred and fifty to four hundred and ninety thousand dollars if we pay for it outright. The, the, the allure of that type of vendor offering, um, the opportunity to amortize those costs over five years is really kind of what, what that, that was the allure, right? Is we can amortize that cost over five years, right? I'm not gonna buy my wife a brand new car and pay for cash if I don't have to. If I can get a good interest rate, I'm gonna get a good interest rate and amortize that cost over five, six years. You know, if, if we have the money, it was buying cash and, and, and then we're done. Uh, but, but a- as, as things grow and fiscal restraints come tight, we try to, um, spend that money wisely and, and hopefully keep as much cash as we can, uh, within the city. And that's kind, that was the allure. Uh, we're, we're talking about that with some of our local vendors and if they can provide that same, um, fiscal, uh, you know, fiscal opportunities. And absolutely, it's, it's, um, that's kind of, I hope that answered your, your question, Councilor here? I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Gera, I apologize.
He's doing the figures on there.
Yeah, okay.
But that, that's why I just put, you know, I don't think costs have gone up too much. So let's say we got another five cars. Um, I, I think that's the only way we can afford cars is if, if we do lease, sir, and ma'am, and council. Like, eh, eh, buying them outright is costly.
Better remember, there are tariffs involved, there's lease charges, there's all that stuff. I don't know how much that's gonna affect.
So we're.
Auto charges.
But we're looking either Dodges or Ford, so it shouldn't, I don't think it should matter too much. I would, I wouldn't think.
Everything gets manufactured all over the world now.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, yeah, we, but we don't know because we've not put it out yet.
Right.
We're asking for council's approval to move forward. So we're just waiting for that and then, then we can push that out, sir.
And those agreements will come back to council for approval, is that correct? Cause we wanna see any new lease, any new lease comes to council.
Yeah, a- absolutely. Again, this is just, this is approval to go out and start the process.
Okay.
Ultimately, the council, you tell us yes or no. And, um, I, I believe that's, that is all for the police department.
Well, when it comes to, for the council.
You know, I have a question. Does anybody know how much money we have in Measure S?
I believe.
I mean, we're saying Measure has gotta buy all this stuff, but how much money do we have?
Okay, that, so that's in the special, Robyn, I'll be going over that in a couple of new slides coming forward. But I can tell you really quickly now, we have a.
We can wait.
Okay, it's up to you.
Actually have the pizzas here, so. We will hold on to the suspense for, after, after lunch. Yeah, and we'll break. We'll break for twenty minutes and then we'll come back.
Had a couple of comments about um public input on the budget and we do have oral communications at the end of the presentation. So we do have oral communications coming up again. Also, um per the city attorney, we are going to revisit the consent calendar. City Attorney, um did you want to call for a new vote? How how do we do this? So why don't we go back to the consent calendar at this at this moment? And I'll ask counsel if anyone would like to take any of the items off before we vote on the consent. Or actually, we'll just go item little item to item one one. So the first item is approval consideration resolution. Twenty twenty five thirty four for notice of completion for the transit oriented development improvement project. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have public comment? Anybody online or on the phone with public comment on this consent item?
Mayor Robertson, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mayor Procton Guerra?
Yes.
Councilman Avalos?
Uh yes.
Councilman Osagara?
Yes.
Councilman Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Item one two, approval consideration of resolution twenty twenty five dash three five approving first amendment to professional services agreement with Griffin Structures for additional service request. Number one fee for master plan concept design and bridging documents for a temporary EMS facility to be incorporated into a new fire station headquarters campus. Our chief Webster, did you have any comments about that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh I was hoping to maybe entertain some questions from the council as to um their previous no vote. Um it sounds like there's some concerns from the public with regards to the location. Um uh I would happily address those if you wish.
Thank you for that. Does counsel have any questions for Chief Webster at this time regarding this consent item?
Um sure, chief. I have a couple of questions. Just and I get the location. I understand why. I mean, I've been here. I understand why we had to pick that place because there's two other places, you know, which were much more expensive. And that was one of the the better locations for the price. Um and I get that. But my concern is is the phases and I still to this, you know, when I question about how do we go from nine million five to eleven point five now to twenty six five. I mean, in order to be realistic, because we've been big champions for this fire station for years now. And we always said they were going to get it done in two years. Well, that's been four years ago. And we're now at this point. So I just feel like in order to get this process done and complete and move forward, we need to get realistic, realistic figures. And I just don't see two point, I mean, twenty six point nine or five or especially when I'm just saying, I talk to other people, other cities, and they're looking at doing one and they're not even compared to what we're coming in at. I mean, I I want this and I want it done because I know we need it and we needed it four years ago. But we got to get realistic here and twenty twenty six point nine is just not going to cut it. It's not going to happen. I I just don't see you guys getting the fund, especially with times now. There's not going to be any funding coming down our pipe at all for a while. I don't want to see this go another eight years, ten years. It's just, it's not going to be doable. So I would like to see, maybe we need to take a, you know, revisit and look at these this plan and see how we're going to be able to move this forward so that we do get a fire station.
Uh thank you for your comments. Um I agree that uh the evolution, I'd say, of cost has been significant. And um I think that there are a number of things here that need to be addressed. Uh the first thing that I'd like to mention is is the location um of that site. Fire stations are designed for the most efficient travel time to an incident. And the national uh or I'm sorry, the NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency, um they create a guideline or an industry standard of a four minute travel time uh as the standard for response. Uh there's no perfect location for a fire station. Um otherwise, we'd have to have them all over the place, right? And and the cost of that would be very challenging. That specific location, catty corner to the high school. Um there's a couple of important um comments with regards to the concerns of the adjacency. The uh the fire station itself will exit onto Thompson Avenue, which is the western edge of the high school where the football stadium is. Uh the majority of the pickups and drop offs that occur at the high school are accessed off of Wright Street. Um our route of travel to the east from that fire station because Huntsman, excuse me, uh Huntsman does not actually end on McCall. Uh we would either be heading north or south on Thompson to access those parts of the city. And so we would really be circumventing the high school traffic there. Um Thompson is a four lane road. Again, uh there's there's room for parking and then there's room for two lanes of northbound and southbound vehicular travel, uh which is plenty of room for us. We require twenty feet unobstructed for the fire code. I believe the width with quick measuring on Google Maps is roughly sixty four feet, um which allows, you know, three times the width of of what we would require for travel. Uh you know, the as far as the phasing of the project, um I agree with you that the cost is extremely high. And when you are comparing um the cost of fire stations to other agencies, it's important to compare the scope of the facility. Uh when I started this project, um you know, a year ago or more, uh my marching orders were to incorporate the operations facility as well as a fire department headquarters, which is the equivalent of our four thousand foot structure across the street, the um the portables. Um so uh when other agencies build fire stations, it is um mostly common for fire companies to house uh one fire engine typically with enough staffing for four personnel. Uh the one apparatus bay, sometimes there's two for a reserved piece of equipment. Uh typically, fire stations aren't fire stations and headquarters all incorporated under the same roof. And that's why you're seeing such a drastic uh difference in the expense, square footage, site plan, all of that. Uh for for me and the decision item that is in question today, um we uh are in dire need for a facility for EMS staff uh to be housed in. And the um that is, it's time sensitive and it is critical to our mission. Our our staff are currently in a facility that has um the space for three personnel and there's two personnel that are um that share a bedroom, you know, every single night. And with that, um you know, comes privacy concerns and safety concerns. Um and the facility itself just isn't, it was it was utilized previously by a private uh EMS company that we had contracted with uh with the intent that uh it was temporary um housing for those personnel. Though uh private EMS is drastically different than municipal EMS with regards to the um the staffing, the quality of employment, the uh the schedules that they work, uh all of those things. And and so when you work for a private company, it's it's you typically work one twenty four hour shift or one twelve hour shift. Our folks, they are there for forty eight hours, seventy two hours, ninety six hours. Um and so they're there for significantly longer periods of time. Uh and and so the uh facilities um need to be able to meet those changing conditions. It's it's essentially their home, uh you know, one third of their life on normal schedule and it's their home more than that just based on on our needs. And and so uh you know, there has been um, you know, incidents, not to get any into any details, but incidents where people's uh our staff's privacy um and safety has been compromised due to uh that facility um not meeting the needs uh of our staff. And so my priority is to have that facility uh completed as soon as possible. And um from my perspective and the uh cooperation of some of our staff and department heads, we've truly exhausted um just about every other option with the exception of possibly housing our staff in a in a hotel on a temporary basis, which is not ideal. And I I I wouldn't even want to recommend that to you. Uh you know, the 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 item that is brought before you today for consideration is an expanded um scope of the original professional services agreement to incorporate the design of the EMS facility into the fire station campus. Um and then, as you know, and I mentioned, uh that campus is designed in a phased approach uh due to the uh immense cost associated with the full build out of that project. Uh I believe that um, you know, just from a uh, you know, purely financial perspective, I believe that we're able to fund the construction of phase one, uh which would be the EMS facility um with zero impact to the general fund or our reserves. Uh I believe that the um the cost associated with the construction of phase two, which is just, you know, the typical fire station that you would compare to other agencies. Um you know, it's going to take some time to 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 fund that and pay cash for it or look at other um financing options depending on the comfortability of the city. Um but that's going to be a ways down the road, uh I feel. And and you know, I, there is no doubt that um from me that it's going to be challenging to fund that facility. Um but when we're making these decisions, um you know, there's not like a Swiss army knife, so to speak, that's gonna that's gonna take care of all of the things that we try to address. This facility is going to sit on that property for probably fifty and seventy five years. Um you know, similar to our current fire stations. And um you know, planning for today may look a little bit different than planning from ten years from now or fifteen years from now or fifty years from now. And so it's very challenging to do that. Um the fire administration, my staff, we're very comfortable in the facility that we're in today and uh will continue to do um the good work that we do on a daily basis. Again, my uh my marching orders at the beginning of this project were to incorporate scope to relocate that facility um or incorporate the administration as part of that fire station. And so um, you know, the benefit to the design is uh we cannot include that and it's part of the design. And at later time, you know, ten years from now, we get, you know, one times money or we're able to uh, you know, set money aside year after year to fund the next phase of that project. Then then we already have it all designed and it's it's going to just, you know, blend into the campus for the overall, the overall project. Um you know, what I I guess the last piece of that is, is there were suggestions for the southwest um portion of town. Um and I I don't disagree that that is a good location uh for a fire station. I don't know that it's a good location for the next fire station. Um we do have one fire station that is on the west side of the train tracks, which is our station one. Uh you know, and then our station two is on the east side of the tracks up on A Street. Uh we do, uh we are able to access that southwest portion of town um in a timely manner. There isn't a huge deficit in response time there. Um but we, that's something that I look at. And as the city grows, again, you know, we built these fire stations in the fifties and City of Selma looked a little bit different than than it does today. And so those fire stations aren't um perfectly located based on the growth of the city. Um but they work today based on on the needs that we have. But eventually, you know, those stations are probably going to have to be relocated um in order to more efficiently serve uh the the community and the response time standards that we have. Um you know, without boring you with with too many details, and I'm happy to to field any questions that you that you have. Um the the EMS facility is absolutely critical uh to the operations of the fire department. And um, you know, I would, I'm, you know, we've we've exhausted a lot of different options. Um and I did that, I don't, I don't have a different recommendation for you other than to proceed. And and so um with that, um you know, I'm happy to to, you know, hopefully field any other questions or try to persuade you in uh in in proceeding in that.
Well, chief, I appreciate all the the expl- explanation and thank you for it.
Sarah, I have a question. You know, chief, I mean, previously in the council, you said you're you're going to need another fire truck,
You know, unless you're already, unless they're approved already, you're gonna get them. If they're not approved, you better get in line with the two thousand other people. Uh that's gonna be tough. So um that's why at this stage of the game, what the pie put this on the back burner. Because we we just don't have that kind of cash flow. That's what I'm looking at now. I'm just being straight up.
So is this a vote, just to clarify, this is a vote to incorporate the design of the EMS just into the new fire station? This is not a vote to move forward with the fire station. Right. So I think maybe we're looking at this, this is a little different than um what we're prepared to do at this time. Which I I think is probably pump the brakes on the the new fire station because it's just so so expensive at this time. However, this is just to. Put the the incorporate the design of the EMS, which will need to go into a fire station. But that's not saying that the new fire station will actually be built. That's that hasn't been committed to. And this has already been budgeted? For the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget, is that correct?
Yes. So in the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget, the council appropriated four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Out of the ambulance fund for the relocation of our EMS staff. Uh at mid-years, we brought a budget amendment to move the expenditure from the ambulance fund. Into um I call it the four, five, nine fund, cause that's the code for the the GL code for it. But ultimately, it's the um state earmark that was provided for from Senator Hurtado. For the construction of a fire station. And so we were awarded uh four point five million dollars through OES pass-through grant. That was part of the um the earmark from Hurtado. Uh so the the, yes, the um. It was budgeted for, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars was budgeted for the relocation of the EMS facility. There has been um for that fiscal year, seven hundred thousand dollars was budgeted for the design of the fire station. Um again, that was coming out of that same state earmark money as well. Uh the professional services agreement that I am requesting to amend. Uh was for uh master architect and construction management of the fire station. With a not to exceed amount of one point zero nine four million dollars. Uh the amendment is to incorporate the scope of the EMS facility with uh two items. One is forty thousand dollars and the other one is seventy-five hundred, which is the uh design. And the preparation of the bridging documents, uh because this project uh was determined to be a design build. Project. And so that same scope that is in the professional services agreement will continue uh to be utilized for the EMS facility.
So this won't affect your ability to locate those two double wides on that land? And how's EM, the AMS facility there? This has nothing to do with that. This is just.
Has a hundred percent to do with that. So the the relocation, what what? It what you're considering today is the design of that project, which is the relocation of the two portable classrooms. That were uh made available to us by Selma Unified School District. Uh to be able to uh relocate them, provide the parking facilities and infrastructure necessary for that facility. To operate and house our EMS staff. And we call that phase one of the overall fire station campus.
You need this money in order to relocate the EMS facility to that lot?
Yes, sir. And 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 I want to reiterate that the forty-seven, five eight hundred that is being considered. Is just for the design and development of the bridging documents. It does not incorporate the construction cost for that facility. Uh in the budget, once I get to my presentation, uh we've put one million dollars for that facility. As a ear, as a uh placeholder for the construction of that project. We've yet to be given a formal um construction estimate for the infrastructure and and installation of those facilities. Um we're speculating that it's gonna be somewhere between that and one point five million. Uh part of those costs will um be shared with the fire station, phase two and phase three trash enclosures. Some of the drive approach and 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 those kinds of things. Um but that money again is going to. Um be drawn from the grant, the pass-through grant money that was provided by Senator Hurtado a couple of years back.
So the money's there, it won't, it won't take away from the current general fund. And if we don't approve this, you're not able to relocate. Got it. Okay. I think that clarifies matters on that one. Is there uh any further council discussion on this before we call for a vote? Okay, is there a um motion? To approve? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Guerra? Councilman Osagera? Councilmember Avalos?
Uh yes, I'm moving forward.
Councilmember Trujillo? Mayor Robinson?
Okay, thank you. Now we'll get back to our budget review.
Okay, I'm up.
Back again.
And uh thank you uh for the discussion on that. And um it's again, it's such a critical piece of the operations of our department. Um it'll be great to see that project uh get get completed. Okay, so for the fire department for uh fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, um. Our department, there's uh four different divisions. Um we are funded out of um five different funds. Uh we have fire administration, fire operations, fire prevention, and then the EMS division or ambulance division. To start off, for fire administration, uh out of the general fund, um I call that fund twenty-five hundred. Uh we have a proposed budget total of three hundred and sixty-one thousand um two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Uh that is listed on page sixty-seven of your budget book. Uh the highlights for that are the standards of cover, strategic plan, community risk assessment. Uh that is a um, we're proposing seventy-five thousand dollars, which is gonna be split fifty-fifty. Between general fund and ambulance fund. Uh that is an item that was budgeted in twenty-four, twenty-five. Um that we will not be expending this fiscal year. Um as I mentioned in the previous budget workshop, we had some sta- uh challenges with administrative staffing. And we were unable to complete uh that project during that fiscal year. And so the savings uh or those expenses um did not occur for this fiscal year. And so we're proposing to roll that over into this upcoming fiscal year. The uh next item in the general fund is fire operations, uh which is what I call twenty-five, twenty-five. And that starts on page sixty-nine of your budget book. We have a total proposed budget of three million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Uh incorporated in that is a uh capital improvement to fire station two, which is located on A Street. Uh that station um again was built in the the fifties, I believe. And there's um what we're asking for is some interior renovations to incorporate an extra sleeping quarters. And then also incorporate some split air conditioning units. The living quarters, or I'm sorry, the sleeping quarters are on the uh western um portion of that building. And so they get the afternoon heat um during the summer months. And uh the original air conditioning unit that was installed um was inadequate for the the full build out of that facility. And so it it creates some um air conditioning challenges for our staff. Uh any question, I kind of zipped through both of those. Any questions on on fire administration or fire operations out of the general fund?
About the overtime? What's going on with the overtime, fire operations and administration?
Sure.
There, I didn't see any administration, but fire operations?
Yeah, so uh to that page. Uh fire operations, overtime, we're budgeting um three hundred thousand dollars. Last year's budget was two hundred thousand dollars, so you will see an increase uh of the budget. Um this past fiscal year uh with staffing shortages and challenges. Uh I wanna say we exceeded the budgeted amount and I don't even know the right number. Maybe by a hundred and sixty thousand or it's quite a significant amount for the overage. And so we budgeted a more aggressive number there for this uh this upcoming fiscal year. Um I want to highlight that um the uh overtime in general fund operations. Is appropriated for the staff that are allocated to that fund. And we have fire operations staff that are split between uh ambulance fund. There's a, there's a co- um, there's a division within ambulance, or I'm sorry, department within ambulance fund that covers fire personnel. Uh as well. And so you'll see that there's overtime charges uh for personnel in both accounts.
And then how many vacancies do you have in the, how many um total firefighters do you have in your department at this, at this time?
Uh we are budgeted for uh the the fire chief, we have three battalion chiefs, we have six captains. Um nine engineers, six firefighters, twelve paramedics and six EMTs. The um we have some folks on um long-term uh work comp injuries. And so we have some vacancies uh at the captain's level. Last year, we underfilled a firefighter position um with an engineer. And so we actually had uh ten engineers on payroll. One of those was holding a um, the sixth. Uh firefighter position. Um and so uh this year, well, today. We have uh one captain position that is on long-term um injury. And we're not quite sure on a return date there. Uh we have a engineer that is still holding a firefighter position. Um and then we have a firefighter vacancy. Uh we do have an active recruitment for firefighters who we intend to hire two. Um off of that list. Uh and then we will be at full staffing.
Total of, so what's the total right now? How many employees?
Full-time?
Yep.
Uh I wanna say it's fifty-four full-time and what is it? Oh, I'm sorry, forty-six full-time employees and ten, fourteen? All right, so total. Thank you, Janie.
And then how many vacancies?
Uh on the fire side, we have two firefighter vacancies. Technically, we have one vacancy, yeah.
Has that been pretty steady, the number of vacancies during the year?
No, our fire department, um well, yes and no. The the fire department, we've been um very successful in recruitments over the, over the last year. We were, did recruitments at all ranks, battalion chief, captain, engineer, firefighter. And we've been very successful in filling those positions. We recently had a firefighter um go to a Southern California agency. Uh and we were um, and that's the recruitment that we are currently working on. And we anticipate filling that vacancy um sometime after the fiscal year, but it's.
So two, two vacancies and twenty percent overtime, wh- what's the reason for all the overtime?
Uh the overtime is a retrospective look of the entire year. The vacancies are respect, are a reflective of today. And so uh during the course of last year, uh we had at times one battalion chief. At times, two battalion chiefs. Uh those positions are filled twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. I've had a fire captain out on long-term injury for months and months and months. That position is filled twenty-four, seven, not twenty-four, seven, I apologize. Uh two out of six days for twenty-four hours at a time. Uh we also, our staff, our staffing model. Uh which is the amount of staff that we have, um we have the flexibility of one relief position. A relief position is basically the ability to have a member off duty and not have to call back overtime. And so our minimum staffing below battalion chief is six. We staff three fire apparatus with two personnel on each fire apparatus. Our staffing is seven. Um however, when there are injuries or vacation or sick leave or uh you know, any of those things. Where folks are not on duty, we have to call back beyond that uh one person, which is a fairly common um practice. And last year, uh we were faced with, uh I would consider a abnormal amount of. Um work comp injuries, um personnel matters that required leave for um, you know, various. Uh reasons and then um vacancies just caused by movement. We had the retirement of senior staff. Um we had staff going to other agencies. And so there's just been a tremendous amount of movement um with that. And I anticipate the cost of overtime to go down, but it's never gonna go away to zero. And then the the next component of overtime that you see is out of our EMS division. Um those folks are um, they're entitled to full FLSA, so any uh. And they're different than our suppression staff. So anything that exceeds forty hours, they're entitled to overtime. And they work a fifty-six hour work schedule, which is an industry standard. And so part of their wage and benefits. Uh is that they uh incur sixteen hours of overtime per week. Um which is something that we factor into our um, our workforce plan. And that's something that we factor into our recruitment models and is really an industry standard for that uh single role or non-safety. Paramedic or EMS professional um there. And so we don't incorporate that as part of their standard personnel salaries. We incorporate as a separate line item as overtime. And so you see an increase out of that division, which our department, which is twenty-six hundred. But um anyway, hopefully that clarifies it for you.
A little bit, the um, I'm looking at this payroll um from, it specifically ambulance.
Yep.
That looks like where most of it's happening. And you got uh for budgeted, you've got a million forty-seven for salaries. Um for full-time, hundred and thirty-four for part-time. Overtime, you have six hundred thousand, five hundred and eighty-five thousand budgeted in there. I would think overtime would be just one of those things where it just happens, you know, on a, on a percentage. It seems like this is a hard cost, an actual, it's actually part, how could, how could the city? Budget that overtime better so it's not overtime anymore and just schedule those additional hours? Can that happen? Or are these ships automatically going to include overtime for these folks in ambulance? Cause I mean, I'm looking at fire and out of one point eight million, it's eleven percent overtime, two hundred thousand. In in ambulance, I mean, it's it's absolutely, it's fifty percent of wages overtime. What's the, what's the remedy here?
Sure. So the, again, on the EMS side, because they are in a different classification. Um there are laws that determine how um staff are are paid or compensated. And so for firefighters, there's a rule, and I don't know the number, Janie Mae. Um that dictates how overtime is compensated and it's based on a formula. In the City of Selma, it's um, there was an MOU item that determines or dictates how that's compensated or paid out. And there's actually a different um GL code associated with FLSA that you'll see in the in the budget document. Yep, okay. So that is a component of overtime. It's just worded differently because of the laws that dictate how firefighters are compensated. For non-safety or single role, however you want to define them. Um they are entitled to the same rules as any other forty-hour employee. And so um the, the reason that fire departments. Are going to a non-safety or single role uh position is because it's still more cost-effective. Than getting, is it seven thousand K FLSA or something like that? I don't know, I don't know.
It was seven thousand.
Yeah, okay. So um it's still more cost-effective to pay them the sixteen hours of overtime a week. Than it is to have a full-fledged firefighter that's entitled. And there's definitions that dictate like what.
I understand it's cheaper, not to interrupt, it's cheaper to pay the overtime than to hire an additional employee.
Uh it is, and there, I mean.
What about the comp cost? I mean, doesn't that put more strain on the employees? I mean, more time, does it, does it lead to more downtime? More workers' comp claims, that kind of thing? Has that been looked at or what's the trade-off?
Yeah, it's a uh, that's a tough balance and um.
We can have a further offline discussion, but I, just from miles high, I guess my only question is. How can you control the over, control the overtime and lower it for next year?
The the simple answer, which is not a simple answer, is you shut down services when people are not here. And and that's the simple answer.
And that means less mutual aid. So when somebody calls and says, we need you in our area, the call goes. And that means less mutual aid, so when somebody calls and says, we need you in our area, the call goes to another agency instead of Selma?
If we reduce our services, that doesn't necessarily have an impact on, yes, it'll have an impact on mutual aid. But ultimately, it's gonna have an impact on the services that we deliver to our city. And we don't wanna go down that road. And with regards to uh Councilman Avalos's comments, um, Kingsburg does have a fire department. They staff it twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, both fire apparatus and uh ambulances. Uh, we have an auto aid agreement in place where we share resources on a one-to-one ratio, meaning that they send us one engine and we send them one engine. Um, we also have mutually, or I'm sorry, auto aid, which is different. Uh, with Fresno County Fire, where we have two different response models within a geographic area. One of those is for two engines, two of our engines to respond uh within a certain geographic area. And then one engine to respond within that geographic area. The calls themselves or why that there, that is beneficial to us is that we, that same uh resource pool is reciprocated to us. And so when there are times of concurrent calls, meaning that two people call nine-one-one at the same time. We have available to us an automatic aid function, meaning no delay in response um to our citizens. Which is absolutely crucial and it's a cost-saving mechanism to ensure that our cer- city is being served. Um, overtime is really different than providing mutual aid and automatic aid. Uh, with the exception of us going to um master mutual aid fires, which is throughout the state of California. Those incidents, we are reimbursed one hundred percent um with very few exceptions. I don't wanna get into those. And we typically don't respond to those that don't resp- don't reimburse one hundred percent. Um, you know, the, how you minimize overtime is, is get more staffing. But there's, you know, there's a, there's kind of a, a point where the cost isn't necessarily good on the return. Um, the workload and the stress of the job and all those things are factors that we look at. Um, you know, and in, in modern day, like Peppera, which is the new PERS reform bill and all of that. Um, there used to be a wider gap between getting an additional person and, and paying overtime. Now it's much tighter with, with new staff, the, the cost benefit. Um, but we're looking at that. But um, I mean, you guys see the budget, we're talking about huge expenses. I would love nothing more than to increase the staffing of my department. But I feel um that it's fiscally prudent to um do that incrementally and do that when it's absolutely needed. And believe me, I won't be shy when it's time to uh, to ask for those people. Um, but we're not quite there yet. We are working on bringing on a fourth ambulance in a twelve-hour capacity. Again, we're waiting on that ambulance that has been sitting somewhere for months and months. Um, that's gonna lighten the load a little bit. Uh, it's gonna help us with revenues. Um, but we're not, we're just not quite there yet. The overtime thing, I mean, it's a big ugly number, but that's part of the fire service, unfortunately. And if I knew the answer to that, I would retire and go sell books because everybody wants the answer to that question. It's just tough.
It's the special event overtime is that buyers that was reimbursed a hundred percent? I'm looking at that, there's about three hundred thousand in that.
Yep.
So that was brought back into the general fund?
Yes, and that money is, I don't remember the G L code off the top of my head, but that money is listed as a revenue under the general fund. I don't remember if it's under, it's in kind of a weird spot. It's either under admin, which is twenty-five hundred, or it's under operations, twenty-five, twenty-five. I know we've moved it. Um, and I wanna say for this fiscal year, we're still, there's still some outstanding um reimbursements. But the uh, the reimbursements, I wanna say is three or four hundred thousand dollars. It's higher threes, somewhere around four hundred thousand that we get back. And so uh, we do get reimbursed those figures. Um, there's um. Yeah, we pro- we provide the system, our salaries and all those things. It's a fully burdened rate. They reimburse us at one and a half times. Um, that's to cover the backfill behind those staff. Um, and then there's an admin rate, which is ten percent. And it's going up to fifteen percent starting July first.
I have a quick question, Chief. For the size of our city, our population is twenty-five thousand.
Yep.
Let's say. Six fire captains is required for our size of city? I've just never heard that since I've been here. I've never heard we'd had six fire captains.
Yeah, so the uh, our staffing model, we have two fire stations. Uh, there is one captain. So that, let me backtrack. The hard thing with the fire service is we want, we run three platoons. And so when you think about one person, it's really three people because it takes three people to fill one seat for their shifts, right? And so when there's six fire captains, it's really, we have two fire captains on duty every day. There's one at station one, there's one at station two. They are the supervisors of those two fire stations. Uh, station one houses uh two fire apparatus, truck one eleven, engine one eleven. And then station two houses one fire apparatus, which is engine uh one-ten or one-twelve, depending on the day. Uh, their responsibilities are to manage the, the stations and uh operate as incident commanders on incidents and all those kinds of things. Beneath them are the nine uh engineers. Uh, in the city of Selma, we utilize our engineers as company officers. Uh, so they have independence and autonomy to uh run incidents and operate, you know, as a incident commander, as well as supervise our staff. And so at station one, where we house two companies, there is an engineer that is uh, uh essentially a company officer on that fire apparatus. And so we require uh again, those two company officers, one in each station. And then another company officer on that second piece of apparatus at station one. Uh, and then the remainder of the uh nine engineers are the drivers for those apparatus. And so they're responsible for the operation of the pumps, getting to and from scene, all those things, the maintenance. And then we have um six firefighters, uh, two are assigned um to each shift. And so typically, uh, there's an engineer with a captain at station one. And then there's a firefighter with the um, with an engineer at station one. Those are the two companies. And then at station two, there's a captain and firefighter at that station.
Okay, Chief, I mean, on this overtime. Would it be feasible if we got another ambulance to offset this cost? Yeah, a lot of, you know, like, you, you just said earlier, it's the overtime is mostly the ambulance.
The overtime is greater in the ambulance division. Because of the rules that govern how our EMS um.
Would it be feasible to get another ambulance to offset the cost to overtime?
We are working on getting a fourth ambulance on in a twelve-hour capacity. Um, you know, I don't know if you've reviewed the, the revenues um from the EMS fund. But in um, I wanna say twenty-two, twenty-three, they were like four point eight million dollars or something like that. And, and you know, the revenues for this year is seven point seven million dollars. It's, it's an increase of a pretty significant amount. Um, you know, I'll add that the, the projected revenues for the EMS division are fairly conservative. I uh, I estimated um or calculated for our, our insurance revenues. Based on four hundred and five thousand dollars a month in revenue uh next year. This year, we've averaged four hundred and thirty-two thousand. And so um, there's, there's room in that budget. And, and I wanted to estimate those figures conservatively because it's better to, to undershoot revenues and overshoot expenses. Just cause at the end, when it all evens out, you're usually in a better place instead of a significant deficit. But to your point, um, you know, the, the ambulance division isn't necessarily a, a, you know, a, a for-profit company. We uh, our job is to respond to the calls based on the call volume and the need of the resources. And uh, we've identified a need to bring on a twelve-hour car. We're gonna do that as soon as we can get the ambulance here to put that thing on, in service. And that's gonna serve as a study to identify um whether or not the cost recovery can sustain that, that fourth resource. Um, and whether or not that will help um, you know, fund some of the other uh expenses. Associated with the operation of our department. Um, we've restructured significantly the uh, the allocation of personnel uh within the fire department. Uh, and moved a lot of resources over to the EMS fund um this year to, to cover expenses. And to, and to balance the um, the general fund and, and measure S and all those things. And um, you know, the, the overtime, I uh, I run a pretty tight ship. And people work the days that they have to work and there's no like extra period. And, and so, you know, when there's strategies to um, to reduce overtime expenses, it's challenging. I mean, there's, there's so many things that are outside of our control. Somebody can get injured tomorrow, somebody can, you know, go on baby leave. Or somebody can go find a different job. And, you know, we can plan for all of those things, but it would be very costly to, to be able to forecast and have adequate staffing. To where we'd never have to call back um to do that. And so um, you know, again, I will um, I will definitely bring you the recommendation to increase our staffing when that time comes. Um, I don't think that we're there yet. I'm, I'm uh, say relentlessly optimistic that last year was an anomaly with regards to the amount of overtime. Uh, it was tough and our staff, they'll tell you, it was hard. Those people were here a lot. I had some guys that worked two or three thousand hours of overtime, which is two thousand and three thousand hours away from their families. And um, and they felt it, every bit of it. And the city is, you know, they're footing the bill for that, which is tough. Um, you know, and, and, but that, it is what it is, be able to provide the level of service that we do. Um, which again, I feel is the absolute gold standard for um. Uh, for the city and I, and I, and I think that um, you know, it, it goes to say. Um, how much support there has been from council for public safety. And I think that um, you know, the path that we're on is sustainable for the fire service. And um, I wanna continue to grow and, but I also wanna do it in a manner that we can sustain. Um, and I, and I think we're on that path today, uh, even with the exorbitant amount of overtime that you see in the, in the financials.
But you, you see the concern, those, when you see, when you tell me things like that, Chief. You're putting stress on the workforce and liability is gonna, when you have your workers, you know, that many hours out there. You know, that's, that's definitely, you know, it's, it's stress on your workers, you know?
And those conditions today are very different than they were last fiscal year.
You know, especially when they, they're tired and they go to, you know, uh, trying to save a patient. They're not, maybe not totally focused sometimes. A lot of times, there's a chance of liability there. You gotta be careful, you know, that's another issue in life. You know, so I, I, I have concerns when, when employees work that many hours. And I mean, you know, it'd be like you uh stay, party all night and uh, I got another forty-eight hours of work to guy still. At the end of the day, you're not a hundred percent. And that's what I feel, you know, when he can tell me this, you know, we gotta find a solution, you know, to help these people in our city that work for this.
Well, well, one of those ways to help them be putting in the new accommodations for them at the side of the um someday fire department? Will that help? Will that help?
Uh, yes, for our EMS staff especially, that new facility will be a uh tremendous benefit to their well-being for sure.
And might even, as a side benefit, decrease the overtime because fewer people might have injuries, claims in, you know, issues. That require overtime or will that wage structure always? Cause it looks like last couple of years, overtime's pretty, pretty similar. It doesn't look like it's going anywhere, unfortunately, due to the wage structure.
Yeah, for the EMS folks, I mean, it's, that's part of their salary structure. I mean, there's no changing that. They get sixteen hours of overtime every week.
Sixteen.
Yep. They work a fifty-six hour work week, um, which is uh, they work two out of every six days. Um, and, and that is the industry standard in the model. And it's part of the cost of that employment. It's, it's part of their fully burdened rate and we plan on that. It's not like it's a surprise. That, that overtime expense is part of their, of having non-safety or single role personnel. There's no way around that.
Thank you. Anything else, Chief?
I remember where I left off here. Uh, next slide. Okay, so uh, we talked about enterprise fund and ambulance fund um quite a bit. And uh, so here we see proposed revenues of seven point seven million, proposed expenditures of seven point six eight four three fifty-one. Uh, some highlights there is the purchase of another ambulance at two hundred and eighty thousand and then the cardiac monitors. Um, that is a um, six-year lease program for the purchase of nine cardiac monitors. And that incorporates all of the maintenance and all those things. And so that payment will be reoccurring um for the next, uh, I wanna say six years. And I, and I forget, I want, yeah, six years. Um. Estimated fund balance at the end of next fiscal year or this upcoming fiscal year is the five million four hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred ninety-four. Uh, the next one you see is equipment replacement or special re- or I'm sorry, the equipment replacement fund. I call that the one-eleven account. Out of there, uh, we're requesting one command vehicle. Uh, the cost for that is a hundred and fifteen thousand. That incorporates the purchase of the vehicle and the upfitting and equipment associated with that vehicle.
Purchase, Chief?
That is the purchase of a vehicle and we are gonna do our best to buy that thing local, so um.
Appreciate the effort.
Yep, and uh, the next item there is fire radios. Uh, those are for handheld radios for our department, our current um batch of uh fire radios. We're having some challenges with communications and the um, the output power that they have. Um, so anyway, so it's time for, for those. And so that's an outright purchase of a hundred and forty-five thousand. And that's for the purchase of thirty um handheld radios for our fire staff. And then um, out of measure S, um, this, the police chief had mentioned the operating budget. We share that operating budget, so that's not just mine. It's a combination of the two of us. Um, I have some one-time purchases in there, which is a fire apparatus, M D T software and hardware that's uh thirty thousand dollars. That's the purchase of um iPads, cooling fans and mounts uh for the M D Ts that are gonna go in the. Um, three fire engines, ladder truck and the squad. And then uh forty thousand dollars for P P E. That's a recurring expense that's included every year. And what that does is purchases our staff's um structural firefighting clothing. Um, it's for new employees, then the recurrent um uh procurement. And that's both structure and uh wildland P P E. And then um fire hose twenty thousand dollars and that's for the replacement of some of our current complement of fire hose. Um, that just wears out over time, gets damaged and it's time to replace that stuff, so um. That's it.
Just um, real quick, so the measure S is about a million dollars a year. Was there some carryover from that? Last couple of years, it's a three point five million dollar balance there? About three point five, that's the half cent sales tax per safety for fire and P D. Fire gets a third and P D gets two-thirds. Is that about right? That's the usual allocation I think I've seen. Is that, are we continuing that?
Yes.
Okay. And the new fire truck, the new fire engine, what, what are, what's the status of that? Where are you asking for that? Are you asking for that?
Thank you for the reminder, Mayor. I had uh two other items that aren't incorporated in the slides. Uh, item one, the new fire engine. Uh, so that was brought up at the previous workshop meeting. Um, I intend on bringing that to a, a future council meeting for decision. The expense of the one point two million dollars is not included in this operating budget. Um, it is something where council has decisions. They can either pay it upfront, pay the delivery. Um, create some sort of financing, like a lease purchase program. We can defer those payments all the way to fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I believe. Um, it just, it kinda depends. Uh, but I will bring you guys a decisionary packet at a future date um to make those decisions. Um, uh, at a later time.
Where, where would that be coming out of the fire budget if it, if it were to come out?
Uh, that's gonna be a decision. I mean, it could come out of a combination. I think the ladder truck was a combination of ambulance fund, measure S and general fund money. Um, and so we can utilize that same structure. Uh, and this is, I don't even know if this is feasible. One of the things that I was thinking about going forward is the um. The earmark money for the fire station, if that is able to be utilized for a fire station or a fire department equipment at all. There may be an opportunity to, to pay cash for that without impacting general fund. I don't know if that's feasible or not. I can tell you that the savings of paying um cash upfront's about a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, which would purchase uh a good amount of the equipment that needs to go on that fire engine. And then obviously, if you finance it, there's uh interest costs associated with that too. So a pretty hefty swing depending on, on which um choice, but that's gonna come down to the um, you know, the.
We know if the, the Senator Hurtado grant would, would be available to be used for a, a fire truck. As, as opposed to, you know, a new station, real property. As opposed to, you know, a new station, real property as opposed to.
I'm gonna look into that.
Okay, that would be good to know. And we just know that just puts the new fire station a little bit further down the road time wise if we allocate it to that.
And then uh, the last piece is the um, out of the four, five, nine fund, which is that earmark money. Uh, we have listed in there the uh full amount for the not to exceed from Griffin Structures. Which is the one point nine for uh, one point zero nine. It's basically one point one million dollars. And then a million dollars for the construction of the EMS facility is incorporated in there as well, so. Uh, we're not at a decision point yet to proceed with construction, but that money is just sitting there as a uh. Um, for the design component and then the construction of the EMS facility once we get there.
And for right now, the the dub- the the donations from the school, the two trailers will be going in no matter what. That's gonna go in and happen. And then the design for the EMS facility will happen at a later later date. The construction of the EMS facility.
The that project is the same, so.
It's the same.
Yeah, so the EMS facility is the installation of the the um, school districts.
Two trailers. And how much is that gonna cost total?
We, I, we haven't gotten a formal um, cost estimate on that project. Um, I earmarked a million dollars there because there's infrastructure and the uh, the. The tenant improvements for a portable are roughly um, four hundred dollars ish a square foot. Kind of depending on finishes, it's a four thousand. Yep, yeah, so.
So that's one in the same, got it.
It is.
Let me make sure. Thank you. Any other questions for the fire chief? Anybody from the public with a question for the fire chief? Okay, well, come on up.
Joyce Casey, Dino B. Avenue. I have a son who's a retired paramedic, so I'm very interested in some of the stuff you talk about. So you want to move these buildings? That you have been given? How's the M EMS? Where are you wanting to move them to?
The location is at the Thompson and Huntsman property where the fire station, the new fire station project is located.
So that that means that you will be starting the whole, hello, the whole big thing with that project.
I will be the first phase of that project.
So there's no backing out?
The entire build out of that project uh will be at the council's discretion. Um, phase one of that project can stand alone. Uh, it doesn't require phase two or phase three to be incorporated in that. Uh, it will sit on the, if you were to divide that property in half between north and south. Uh, or I'm sorry, between east and west, it'll sit on the western edge of the eastern half, if that makes sense. So kind of in the middle, but a little bit to the right, if you're looking.
My point is, if you do that, then we can't, then the city cannot sell that property. And look for a better location for your nice big project. Because you will have it committed. By doing what you're wanting to do.
I don't know that I can even speak to that. The there would be an opportunity for the city to do a lot line adjustment. Just for the specific um, that piece. Uh, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the setback is um there, what the size of that parcel would be. That would be sitting on the um, the east of that, but um, there is. Uh, I would say an option for the city to do that if it so chose. Um, but that's again gonna be.
Is there no other place where you can do these, this building for the EMS? Have you even looked at another site?
Uh, we have looked at um, quite a few different locations in our search. Uh, to relocate our EMS staff. Uh, being that that site was selected uh for the construction of the new fire station. Um, it made sense to incorporate that facility on that site. Uh, because of the benefits of having our staff centrally located on one campus. The um, the supervision and command structure that that is incorporated with that. Um, again, to your point, the um. The, there needs to be a fire station on the north end of town. Um, that site was selected as an appropriate site for the fire station. I agree with you that at some point there needs to be a fire station located in the southwest. Um, you know, our. What, how we determine where fire stations go are driven by um, travel times for our fire apparatus. And uh, we require um, also not require, but the guideline and standard is a four minute travel time. And the reason that is, is because brain tissue um starts to die uh between four and six minutes into cardiac arrest. And so we want to be able to get onto scene within that four to six minute window to ensure people have the best chance of survival. Uh, when they choose that. And so when you're locating fire stations within a city. Uh, how it kind of works, just to give you a visual, is if you were to dry um, draw circles around fire stations. You want the circles to um, be adjacent to each other throughout throughout the city and and yeah. And so um, when selecting sites, there are response challenges to that northern edge of town from our current fire stations. And as we project the growth, um, based on our general plan and sphere of influence. Uh, we've identified that as a site to be a long-term um, location for us to be able to efficiently provide. Uh, response. And then also we've identified that um, there's opportunities in the southwest of town. As long as, as well as the eastern edge of town. And we've been working uh alongside the planning department. Um, to look for uh opportunities for developers to incorporate land to be set aside for um. For services that uh would be um, required to serve those parts of the community. And so um, that is certainly part of the conversation and the long-term planning that is um, going on, I guess, behind closed doors. Um, you're you're absolutely right in your assumption that at some point there needs to be a station down in that southwest portion. Um, you know, the the stations that were built in the fifties and sixties, they're not in the best location. Because at the time they were built for the city that existed then, which is very different. And so as we grow as a community, um, it's my job to ensure that we can serve all of the portions of town. Um, as best possible. And so as development occurs to the east, we're looking for locations for another fire station to be located. As we develop towards the south and west, we're looking for locations for a fire station to be located. Uh, we're working on incorporating uh revenue generating tools uh, like um, such as impact fees. And um, um, RFDs and and those types of mechanisms to ensure that those services can be funded into the future. Um, but for today, um, you know, that's, that's where we're looking. And and you know, it's the council's prerogative to make the um, the final say. Um, you know, I'm relied on as a technical expert in providing um, emergency services and um. Uh, you know, it's it's tough to find the perfect site for a fire station, but I will tell you that that site will serve the city well. Um, we're always a nuisance because we're in big noisy vehicles and we drive fast and we try to get to emergencies as quickly as possible. Uh, and we're expensive as the um, as the council is looking through our budget. Uh, but ultimately what we want to do is uh, when you or your family members or a community member are facing an emergency. And they want us to be there as quickly as possible, it's my job to ensure that we're making decisions to make sure that my staff can get there in that in that time.
That's three minutes, then we're gonna move on to community development now. Thank you, for your question. Okay, moving on to the community development department. Thank you, chief.
And I know I'm loud, but. Uh, good afternoon. Um, to kind of piggyback on what the chief was saying, real quick, if I may. Um, as we go through development proposals under the California Environmental Quality Act and as part of our general development process. Fire is informed of when an application comes in, as well as um, our secret consultants evaluate, you know. Uh, city services as part of that, police, fire, parks, water, sewer and all those type of things. Every project is going to be required to pay their fair share, whether that's the payment of impact fees that can be used to build a fire station later. Whether that's the dedication of a site for a future fire station, those are all acceptable forms of mitigation to fire service. As we know, we have to acquire a site before we can build one. We have projects that have available property where we could require dedication of a few future fire station in the southwest portion of town. However, the sphere of influence does not extend much past Saginaw, so there are properties again. Um, that could become available as part of the development exaction process, so I'll just leave it at that. Um, community development, uh, it's comprised of uh historically four departments. We've added a new department this year. Uh, in the budget under grants management, which I believe was uh previously incorporated into the finance budget. Um, so kind of an outlook on economic development. Um, uh, we have included the hundred thousand dollars for the uh storefront improvement grant. Um, that is administered through the downtown business improvement district. Uh, that item would only be expended as applications are received, so that's not like a one-time money that's sent over to the bid. It's reimbursable, similar to uh, grant applications that the city is currently administering. So when we receive a grant application and it is awarded, it would go through uh the proper approval channels. And then um, that money would then be transferred. So that may be a hundred thousand, it may be fifty thousand. It's just dependent on the number of applications. That are uh, received. Uh, the business improvement district budget, um. It it incorporates what is proposed by the bid. Um, at our upcoming bid meeting, there will likely be a draft budget proposal. Um, that would include um, their general operating expenditures for um, use of their uh dues. As well as any carryover funds from this year, as well as any uh funds that are requested of your council. So that would actually be an item that would come before you, uh, I think in a, at a later date. Um, grants management, as I stated, that's a new department, uh, that was previously um, staffed by a full-time uh employee. Who has since resigned. Uh, we are using part-time uh agreements with her uh going forward. Uh, to help administer the current grants that are in process. We did a, uh, she did a um. She did a lot of heavy lifting organizing the grants program at the city. And um, rather than with her departure, allow that to kind of flounder. We still uh utilize um, that staff person to keep it organized, oversee the current grants until we. Uh, figure out a long-term solution for that. However, currently in process, we have about a hundred, or one point three three million dollars in. Uh, grant applications that are pending award. And so once those items are awarded, or if they are awarded, uh, we would bring a resolution of unanticipated revenue to the city council. To amend uh the revenues for the appropriate funds. Um, for planning, um, you have uh full staffing in planning. Um, which you've seen uh contract planning services go from a large uh expenditure to a rather small expenditure of twenty thousand. Dollars where in past years, I think it was upwards of two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand. Um, that includes um, our GIS implementation, which you guys saw as part of our um, capital improvement project dashboard. Uh, some of the council members saw uh, the GIS implemented at ICSC with a QR code. Uh, so that's an ongoing program that we are utilizing uh through planning. Uh, building, we have our Blue Beam uh e-plan check uh service, as well as our um. Uh, contract building services, plan check and inspection, inspection costs. Um, we do have a full-time inspector, however, if he is out on extended vacation or something along those lines. We do not want to stop inspection services, so we have a line item for uh on-call uh building inspection in the event he is, he is out of the office. So um, apart from that, um, that is the community development overview on expenditures. Um, we also include the engineering department, um, which highlights um, a second phase of the standards and specifications. Updates uh to help um, developers understand what the expectation are uh is when they put in. City facilities such as landscaping, streetlights, sidewalks, et cetera. And then um, we have an expenditure of uh professional services of two hundred and eighty thousand, which is a reduction from last year's amount as well. So, I'm available for questions.
The uh bid, the business improvement district, so we're proposing to add another hundred thousand dollars to the existing hundred thousand dollar. Um, budget for the bid to bring the total to two hundred thousand, is that correct?
It is not incorporated because a formal request hasn't been made by the bid. There hasn't been a draft budget proposal presented to council. My understanding is, is that has been the discussion of the bid to present a hundred thousand, but a formal request hasn't been made.
The, at the last meeting, which uh council, Councilman Osegar and I attended, we have a member of the bid here. It, boy, it's the, the bid discussed that request for a hundred thousand dollar additional. Funding, um, did that need to be made into a resolution from the bid in order to get that?
That'll be on the next bid agenda.
Okay, so the the request for the additional hundred thousand, did you incorporate that in this just in case? That um, request happens and council approves, okay. Any questions for deputy city manager?
Um, in terms of, uh, let's see. Uh, the contract planning services, that's because we have planning fully, fully employed, good. And then um, engineering. Proposed budget, four hundred and eight thousand five hundred and fifteen. So what, where are we going with that? We've had numerous discussions on, I mean, we had the bet, we had the cream of the crop in Yamabi and Horn. Mr. Horn is here, owner of the company, done a phenomenal job for the city. When are we going to be spreading our wings and bringing in an engineer? Who can learn from the best of the best, but actually work here for the city and sort of start assigning the services out? I think we're, that's our long-term goal, I think. And how close are we to to getting there?
So that would be an evaluation with HR on project description, salaries ranges, in terms of what the actual need is at city hall. Um, whether it's someone to just take in permits, approve some grading permits or what have you. Uh, we haven't included any full-time salaries for that discussion, but the reduction in the expenditure for professional service. Allows for some expansion of the budget if needed.
Having that, having someone come in who is potentially a full-time engineer, will that reduce the amount that's actually paid out? To Yamabi and Horn in the long run?
You would have um sour- you would have savings because some of the work that is allocated to the consultant, similar to planning, would be reduced, right? And so it would just be dependent on what level of engineer would be obtained. If it's a first level engineer, they could maybe do first go around of the. Plan check review and then final goes to David or something along those lines. So it would still be a combination. You wouldn't eliminate a hundred percent. Of the professional services, but it could be reduced.
And then in terms of the inspection, um, Matt's, again, he's awesome, but he's an independent contractor, right? He does, does he work for the city now full-time?
He is a city employee.
Got it. He came from Quatnam. Well, then, engineering. So now he works for the city. Okay, and is there anybody else in the, anybody who can fill in for him? Who does the city utilize in the meantime?
Uh, we use Will Dan as his backup. They've been.
They send some, okay.
Yeah, we, we usually uh. Coordinate or we spread out the inspections. So on, on the instance, Matt's out multiple days as an example. Uh, let's say he's out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We'll try and coordinate all the inspections for Thursday or Friday. So that Will Dan doesn't travel here multiple days and we incur additional costs. Or we'll ask people, can you have your inspection on Monday when Matt gets back? So we don't incur additional costs.
And that, what we saw that Placer AI, are you going to, are they going to come in and do a presentation for the city at a future council meeting?
Uh, we can, we can arrange that. I think we just have a placeholder for that in the event, uh.
Budgeted just in case. Anybody else? Questions? With that, we will um, move on to our next item, which is public works. Deputy C manager, will you be taking that one as well?
I can. Okay, so uh, public works is divided into two divisions, parks and streets. I can. Okay, so uh public works is divided into two divisions, parks and streets. Um you have um the various budgets for uh parks and uh streets, which is out of the fund two ten. Uh you also have um some in back fee um expenditures out of um fund four oh one, which is the street fund. Um you also have some expenditures out of um uh park impact fees. As well as a building and utilities uh internal service fund for various repairs at city facilities. Um some of the highlights, you have the crackhead seal uh machine that allows staff to do some of their own work. Which reduce uh which will reduce the um reliance on outside contractors of seventy or uh, excuse me. Yeah, seventy thousand, which is paid for out of the uh uh impact fee fund. You have the Floral Avenue um queuing expansion project of three hundred nineteen thousand dollars, which would expand the eastbound. Uh left turn lane on Floral and Highland Avenue, which is one of the sore spots for delays because you have cars sticking out. Into the uh center travel lane. So expanding the queuing will hopefully alleviate some of the. Waiting for multiple light changes to make it through that intersection. So that's an impact fee project. Um in addition, um you have the purchase of uh benches and barbecues as well as a mower through the park impact fee fund. And then um you have uh amongst some of the building and utility repairs, you have a hundred thousand dollars for new roofing repairs at city hall. Out of the uh internal service fund, so. Available for questions.
Light post Shaffer, where where are we budgeting that? The new light posts, drilling the holes?
I don't believe that's a budgeted item because we don't have a number.
Shouldn't we have something in there? Because we're gonna wanna get those lights back in as soon as we have a plan.
I think that there's the ability to use various funds, but I don't believe we have that identified. Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a number in there for design and and drawings, but not for the construction.
I think we need to change that. So when we vote on a budget, we need to have, what does council think? How much placeholder, two hundred thousand?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand? Do we? Wait, they, now we're hearing that you can't put them in the old holes. So you're gonna have to drill holes, right?
No, that's why they go five hundred thousand.
Well, they said they had a design, right?
Um let's talk to our accounting, our finance people.
As of right now, that amount would likely come out of fund balance more than likely.
How much?
It would, it would, it it's not a number. It's where it would come out of. It would likely have to come out of fund balance or something along those lines. Because it is not an operating expense at this time, because we don't have a construction estimate. We don't have a an an. A firm construction number for that. Five hundred thousand, I think is on the low end for that amount of work.
Okay, then bump it to a million. Bump it to what you feel you need to bump it to.
We'll, we'll work internally to try and find an uh.
But I don't wanna vote on a budget without it.
Okay.
I don't think any of us want that. It'd be incomplete. And speaking of lights. I've forgotten the last item, trees and lights. Where are we on the budget and speakers downtown? For our, for our bid, are we charging that off to the bid and that hundred thousand? Are we, we need, we need to have. More of a plan on that, you know, in terms of where, when we're gonna put those trees and lights in on second. And put the trees in on High Street. Where's that budgeted?
Believe that is out of. Believe that item isn't, is a fund balance item as well. That's a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar expense.
We also have a grant for Second Street. So I think it's what, three million bucks? So.
Well, Second Street stops at the railroad tracks. And so that project, and we're, we're preparing a presentation on that project as well. To come before council because there's some design items that council needs to approve for that item as well. Uh that that may incorporate into the grander scheme of the uh downtown strategic plan, cultural arts theme. So uh staff is preparing as requested a workshop on the the plans for that item.
Let's do that sooner than later, like ASAP, because I think we wanna keep developing that downtown. You know, we're doing more and more events downtown. We should develop it, I think simultaneously with all the. Life that we're bringing to uh to downtown, especially when we have a grant like that. We got that cash.
Yeah, part of the issue with the grant is stopping at the railroad due to dealing with the railroad, right? And so um as we've talked about, three million dollars is is a lot of money. But in terms of construction costs, the amount that you get done, we're trying to maximize how much we can get done, right? And so it's a Caltrans grant based on the gateway to downtown, which starts at, you know, the off ramps for Second Street. And we're going all the way to the railroad. So we're going pretty far with three million dollars.
And maybe we use a lot of it for a arch sign like we've all been talking about. We want something showing Selma. Showing that you're coming into Selma off of uh off of ninety nine on Second Street. That would look really slick. And then, you know, having the. The other part, maybe the city has to contribute to that.
Yeah, we're, we're doing a workshop. We'll have those items presented to council so they can make a decision on signage, other features as part of that downtown quarter.
Then we have the joint meeting with the planning commission and the BID, the Business Improvement District on Tuesday, the next council meeting.
Design guidelines.
To finalize the guidelines so we can all utilize the grant for our, for our um storefronts.
Correct.
Any other questions regarding um public works?
Okay, so they are going to budget for the lights at Schaefer Park, correct?
We're, we're gonna go back and review to see where we can budget.
Unity Services Department.
Good afternoon. It's finally our turn. I'm excited.
You made it.
Yes, we're here. Um. I just love these pictures. Sorry. So exciting. So with the Community Services Department, um Nicolette and I are gonna tag team this presentation. So I'll talk about four of our branches and she'll talk about the fifth cultural arts. And so um within community services, we oversee um. Everything that's recreation, the um community events, sports, um senior nutrition and the senior center. So if you can go to the next slide. All right, so for our recreation fund, which is gonna be our forty one hundred, this is our um. This is our community events, everything that we provide for our citizens here in Selma. And so we're looking at a budget of about six hundred and forty five thousand dollars. And within that, that's where we budget for all of our um special events. So um the Pumpkin Palooza, the Spring Extravaganza. Um July third is on here. Um. Uh another highlight that I wanna note from this fund is also the contribution that we give to the Boys and Girls Club. That is um. They have requested a thirty one thousand dollar um.
That's gonna come out of your budget?
That comes out of our budget through our professional services. And so that does come out of this six hundred and forty five thousand dollars. And so um with that, within this budget as well, um there's gonna be just different programs that we're wanting to implement within the community. And so those are gonna be our art classes, our um paint nights, our um just. More activities for the community, which we're still trying to define and 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 figure out exactly what those are gonna look like. And so we do have some of that budgeted. Um and then under um forty seven hundred, you're gonna see recreation sports. And so that proposed budget is a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. And so in that, you're gonna see um our youth and adult sports. So that's gonna be our T-ball, our NFL flag program. We were wanting to incorporate a new program this year, which is gonna be our youth basketball. Um and then this is gonna be our co-ed softball as well, um along with just other clinics that we're wanting to implement. Such as um a pickleball clinic, um a Zumba classes for the community, things along those lines. All right, senior citizens, before I move on, is there any questions regarding community events or?
I have a question. Uh you know, we've been doing community events and uh we did one together um in April. We're planning for another one. So are you really gonna have enough money for all your projects here?
So what I have budgeted right now is our standing projects that we do on an annual basis. I have not received direction to. Um budget in excess for additional events at this time. And so that would be something based on council's recommendation.
Yeah, cuz I know we like, we did the summer live and then uh I know you're partnering up with the the bid, so I mean, did you?
So with the partnership with the bid, that is part of our summer series that is already budgeted for. Um and so um that one is set in stone. Um as for the summer live, that is something we do not have currently budgeted. For this upcoming year.
Well, it's just a quick question. What was your budget last year?
For community services? Um six hundred and sixty four thousand dollars.
We definitely need to add something for some alive events next year. That was an important part, our community. Recreation is page one fourteen, if you want the past numbers.
I just want, yeah, I couldn't find it on here.
I'm just not, I'm not seeing the actual, well, one thirteen, recreation.
It starts at a hundred and thirteen, yes.
Yep. Age one thirteen. How much did uh some alive events? How much have they costed this year? Cost?
I wanna say expense wise, it was probably about. Not including staff time would be about fifteen hundred dollars. And that was just for the purchasing of the live music and um some. Booth stuff that we set out, things like that.
How much, how much of that was coordinated with the bid? The Selma live, nothing?
Selma live was not in coordination with the bid.
From your, from your visionary standpoint, how much collaboration do you see with the bid this year? Do you see that relationship growing? Because it looks like there's gonna be a collaboration and event at the end of June in Lincoln Park. How, how can you combine with the bid to achieve efficiencies?
There's definitely a lot of room for growth. I think that with adding um more events to our calendar, it also kinda, you know. Causes some restrictions on staff as well. Um within our department, we have four full time staff and. I can't necessarily count on Nicolette to assist us with these events because she is completely swamped over at the art center. And so. It comes down to myself and my coordinator, cuz our administrative assistant isn't always, that, that's not his role unfortunately. And so it comes down to to staffing. And so that's kind of where our biggest challenge lies at this time is. If we wanna add more to our plate, we would definitely need more assistance in that regard. But as for the potential for our department to grow, I mean, we, we, we can just go up from here, basically. I think that we've done a wonderful job at establishing the current events and programs that we have now. And there's always room for growth. And even partnering with the downtown bid, I I see a lot of potential there as well and and continuing our events with the Selma live um.
What percentage of Bureau of Live Events are downtown within the sphere of influence of the bid? Most of them? Okay, so there's an opportunity for collaboration there.
Definitely opportunity for partnership there.
And staffing too, cuz like you say, you're, you don't have the staffing for those after hours events, which they typically are. And uh the bid has a lot of great board members that are, you know, volunteering their efforts.
Yeah, so um again, I can take this and and add some additional funding for for these events as as we see fit. Um I can, I can come up with some numbers based on on history. Um and work on that. But like I said, just adding more to our plate is definitely gonna be a little challenging, but we'll do our best to make it work.
Yeah, well, you know, the first, the first summer live was great. You were out there, Rose and uh myself, my wife, we were out there helping out and. Nicolette took care of the, of the, the beer, the bar and stuff. So it worked out great. I mean, we didn't have a lot of people, but. Uh thanks to the city um helping out with, you know, blocking the street. Actually, the summer live, I don't know if you guys know this. It's a city council, so uh city of Selma and Parks and Recreation Collaboration. That's how it all got started. We met with Fernando Liz and some of the community members, a couple of the wives, myself. And we came up with the idea, hey, let's do a Selma live event. And actually, we're planning one in September. We're trying to see if you can get um. Pepe Marquez to come down to do a one, do one at the park. So that's what we're working on. Be ready, open up the pocketbook.
Definitely add some more, some more um proposed money revenue or expenditures for our forty one hundred. Okay, um any other questions for recreation, community services?
About the trips to the, you know, the senior trips? What's the status of that?
I will go into that within our um next budgets. And so back one. All right, so under senior citizens, um this is our activities fund. And so um what I did was. I broke down the way that um. Um with finance, we're able to create a different light item. Um so we have a specific line item for senior trips and. Um within that budget, I'm requesting, it's almost about eleven thousand dollars. And with our senior trip coordinator volunteer. Um we have identified a few different trips that um that seem feasible um within our boundaries. Um within our budget that we have requested. And so to be a hundred percent honest with you, moving the bus is very expensive. Just to go to um, just to go to Pismo Beach, which we're planning, or we're going to Morro Bay in July. Uh moving the bus is fifty five dollars per person, and that's with a thirty person minimum. And so. We're going on, so let me advertise, we're going to Morro Bay. We're going on a lunch cruise um. Um down there. And so we're taking off on July seventeenth, if I'm not mistaken, it's a hundred and five dollars. So any, anybody that's interested, it's not just for senior citizens. It's open to, to basically anybody in the community. So. Um going back to that, we have identified some trips that um.
Right there.
Yes.
Run back that question. Okay. They have a trip coming about. What would it, what would it take to make that trip happen for the seniors on your budget?
Completely on my budget. It's gonna be roughly about.
Other, you tell me.
That trip in total will probably be about thirty two hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yes, and that's including the, the boat trip, which includes lunch and then the transportation.
We provide a sack lunch with it or.
So lunch will be served on the boat cruise.
Okay. All right.
And they will ha- also have about two hours to just walk around um Morro Bay as well.
Oh, okay.
And how much would each senior have to contribute?
A hundred and five dollars.
Good deal.
That is a good deal. That's a great day.
Have that one planned for July seventeenth. Um but um yeah, we have identified some trips that they are wanting to go on. And so. Um just a few examples are gonna be our Sugar Pine Railroad, um a little bit up north from here. Um we have solving, another trip to the beach. Um a few casino trips. And then we have also incorporated um attending more shows over at the art center. So we do have a wonderful relationship with Nicolette. And so she does um assist us with uh saving a few seats in the front for our seniors that are. Interested in attending some shows there. Um other than that, um. We have um, I also broke down, um we're requesting another ten thousand dollars for. It's about ten thousand dollars for just senior activities. And so these are gonna be our dances. This is gonna be um. Our dances, our special events, some special meals, um celebrating just Christmas and Thanksgiving. And having barbecues. And one thing that um I'd like to highlight within this budget is, it's always been a goal of mine to do the senior prom. And so I have officially budgeted for this in this budget. And so I'm hoping that um this upcoming winter, we can do a senior prom. Um with them. And so um that's kind of the breakdown within our um senior programming. Um and then moving on to our senior nutrition, um that's looking, it's about a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars that we have allocated towards that. Um within that, um that, that, that's everything senior meals. And so um we did just receive news last week, if I'm not mistaken, that we have received the twenty five thousand dollar grant from Kaiser Permanente. To continue our senior meal program. And so that'll be reflected on our budget as um incoming revenue. Um but for senior meals, we typically um budgeted about forty thousand dollars. Um and that's just to, that is. The meat and the bones right there. Um we purchased from our local EOC that cooks the meals and delivers them on site. And so that's where we're at there. that's where we're at there.
About the oven with the, getting that oven, is that gonna help you to be able to make the meals there?
That will also, it was actually being connected this morning, so I'm very excited to have that up and running, hopefully by the time I get back. Um, but yeah, within that, it's, our goal is to definitely spruce up the meals that we do get from E O C and potentially do some in-house um, cooking for our seniors as well. Um, definitely some easier recipes. I am not a cook, per se, I am the baker. So I will definitely bake for the seniors, but as for cooking, um, again, there's, there's room for growth there in the future. If the council would decide they'd like to go in a different direction. I know there's been conversation about an in-house cook, which I think is wonderful. Um, I know our seniors, um, the meal that they receive from E O C has the nutritional value. So it's not necessarily the best tasting meal, but it is the best meal that they can receive nutrition-wise.
If um, E O, do you have a plan B? In case E O C has to discontinue or scale back services due to their own financial issues right now?
Not that I have not been told. I, I'm aware of their financial issues. Um, there, I have not been made aware of any concerns of them closing down at this time. Unfortunately, if we do go um, and try to apply for the Fresno Madera area on agency um, grant, then um, within that grant, they also utilize E O C. And so I'm assuming that, I'm hoping there's gonna be a part of a solution to that as well. But um, within that, I know that some other agencies have also partnered with their school district to provide meals as well. And so um, there's definitely the ability to
They need to consider a part-time cook.
I know that Kingsburg, the way they model their program is they um, purchase meals through E O C directly, just like we do, but they also provide um, in-house meals with um, I'm not sure if it's their staff or a cook that cooks for them a couple of times a week as well. And so there's definitely that opportunity.
Hey Scott, you know, I, on this budget for the general fund for the seniors, you know, and always take care of the one that took care of you in life. I like to see, I like to see it increase maybe by ten thousand. And you know, they have
Which one? The general fund or the nutrition? The nutrition or the general fund?
General fund, that way they go, they could, they could use it for the bus trips, it's optional. You know, they can use it for like pickleball tournaments or something like this, you know, for the seniors. Line uh, line dancing or whatever, activities for the seniors, uh, you know.
Yeah, so let's add ten thousand to that, definitely. We, seniors all took care of us, we're gonna take care of them and
Well, I like, you know, I like to see people, you know, go to these, you know, these trips like Monterey or something, you know, not often, you know.
Add some more trips to that?
Yeah, add more trips to that, you know, they need to get out, fresh air. If you, if you keep them inside, they become isolated. You don't want those people.
So just to clarify, um, the way we've operated our trips at this time is um, the seniors are, they pay the full burden rate of the trip. So by adding an additional ten thousand dollars, are you wanting me to offer free excursions?
Not plural, but maybe um, one, maybe just, you know, what do you think, council?
Yeah.
One a year? And do a lotto if you get more people than can fit on a bus?
Yes, we can fit up to forty-eight on a bus, if I'm not mistaken.
And parties and thing, you know, as you see fit, just help the seniors out.
Oh, absolutely. And we have a whole list of things that we're ready to do for the upcoming year. And so
Great. There's a waiting list of projects, great.
Yes.
Money will go to good use.
Any other questions? That sums up my portion.
We had an issue last year where the city was using the senior center for offices. Has that kind of gone away? The hours were reduced to twelve o'clock, closing at twelve. That's not happening, right?
No, we are open till two o'clock. That is our normal operation, eight to two, Monday through Friday.
And we had a, we had a classroom session for the council this year for um, employment for um, um, yeah, for an ethics class, kind of a management um, class. And we took over the senior center and no senior showed up. I don't think we should do that anymore. But they, they missed out on the day. We should do it here when we have a chance. And I think we're doing the next one here, like we, like we talked about with Director Benegas. We don't need to take up the senior center, cuz they need a place to go.
Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, thank you for having me. Um, I will be going over the cultural arts portion of the recreation department. Um, if you would like to refer to your budget on page ninety, it goes over the um, highlights of sorry, I'm a soft talker sometimes. I apologize. I'll speak a little bit louder. Okay, so um, on page ninety of our budget, um, we are looking at the first, um, the cultural arts general fund, which is ninety-four thousand. Um, so that is highlighted as um, two youth productions for the year. Um, we've included an art exposure field trip for the youth. Um, this is similar to the SAC teens, where we take a group of kids to go see a live um, professional production, um, so that they can get, just broaden their horizon, see um, a show, some of them for the very first time. Um, in the past, we've taken them to see Lion King. Um, and that was just, I have to tell you, an experience that I will never forget. Um, the other uh, portion that's listed here is we have if put in thirty thousand for equipment, which would be for capital improvement. And we are looking to do an update on our lighting system. Our lighting system is over ten years old. It needs some cleaning. Um, it needs some evaluating to make sure that the cords are safe. Um, that it's just structurally put together in a safe um, environment. And also, we would love to update our basement um, with new dressing rooms, makeup mirrors and tables for our youth and for our adult productive. So that is what the ninety-four thousand, that's listed there.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
In regards to the ninety-four thousand? Last year, we paid for lighting, or we had an increased budget for last year. That was for the lighting. Is it, or what was it for?
No, actually, that was for new microphones. Uh, last year, we did um, around the same amount for new microphones, which was a drastic improvement to the microphones that we had before. And so far, we have had nothing but high marks on our sound, especially with our reviewers.
So, so question really quick, in regards to the operational function of the, of the arts theater. I understand it's, it feeds to our community, but of course, like, we sit here and we're, you know, we're stewards, stewards of our budget, of our monies, right? When you have these, I understand you guys have a board directors and you guys have these, these functions that you guys do yearly. What's the dividend in return of all the, all the, the the amount of shows you're doing aside of what you're providing for the community?
I get happy, I'd be happy to get into that, into the next uh, the cultural enterprise fund, absolutely.
Okay, in regards to that, um, what's the rate of return? And are we ever gonna be where we're gonna be self-sufficient?
So there has been some restructuring that's happened this last year. Um, so be there's a general fund, and then there's the enterprise fund. And the general fund has usually been taking care of our youth program. Um, and uh, fifty percent of uh, of personnel. Um, and then, of course, we've been putting in some budget improvements into that general fund. The enterprise fund was um, part of the Arts Council Programming Fund, but what is also in, which is the four hundred and four thousand dollars, which I will get into, that is um, that majority of that is including the building and maintenance fee, the overhead fee, and now is including all personnel fee. Uh, aside from some part-time employee and before also the director was a portion in the general fund. So out of that four hundred and four thousand, only one hundred and ten thousand is for programming. However, out of that one hundred and ten thousand programming, we do five main stage productions, one SAC production. We have a season announcement production scheduled. We have two band concerts scheduled. We have a holiday cabaret for the, for the community. We have our SAC teen field trip included. We have a beer fest scheduled. We have an arts and culture fest scheduled. We also have, we have allocated money to do for other fundraisers and community events as well.
So if you have those, so, so much scheduled, why are we setting aside another thirty thousand of increase from the city budget versus going from your enterprise?
Sure, to, so to explain, and just again, to answer the que- first question that you had. So out of that a hundred and ten thousand that we use for programming, we have a revenue of a hundred, excuse me. We have a hundred and forty thousand dollars that we bring in for our programming alone. So that is just for the programming. We also have rental fees that we bring in. We also have um, our T O T that comes in and the transfers in. So we do have funds that do come in, but it doesn't cover everything. It doesn't cover our personnel sometimes, and it does not cover our building overhead. However, the projects that we are doing, we are covering those fully and some, and we are chipping away at that um, extended amount. Um, so what we are, what we are asking is outside of that, our building still needs improvement. Along the way, we still need to continue to improve what is being wear and tear. We need new countertops, we need new carpets, we need things like that. We need things that are going to sustain us going forward. For the people that come into our building, it is the downtown, it is the face of Selma. And people that walk into our building and when they see miss, they see bad carpets, they see chips on the wall, or their kids perform in a basement that doesn't have any carpets or proper walls, they're going to take away their um, commitment to us. And
So really quick, just to appreciate everything you're saying, but to correct you on a couple of things. That's the cities, that's the communities building. Okay, so, and when we talk about funding, we talk about, and what I'm, what I'm getting back to is the budgeting part. When I see that there's an investment part and that the enterprise is growing, you have a, you have a board, you guys are growing, and the city council comes and you ask for extra money? And I understand that there's, so basically, we should budget to make sure we maintain, maintain that building, maintain all the up. That's not a question. What I'm asking is, and I've been asking this since I've been here, is where are the residuals to go for what, I, I see more events and I'm happy about that for our community. Because I believe that that, that, that building, you guys are doing a great job and you guys are providing, but I think we should still provide more for our community members.
Yes.
Which means that, you know, access to that building, access to the building. So I, 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 I do wanna correct you on one thing, that that's the community building, right? It's not, it's not a board be- building. And, and because of that, I ask you these hard questions. Our council can give you everything they want, but at the end of the day, we still sit here as an elected body that we represent our community, and we looked at our perspectives, amount of what we're giving. So, and what I believe in is that every board should have a dividend, and they should be earning and they should be seen. And what I believe in is that I should be seeing it going up. And if we're investing every year, I would like to see your board take action in regards to what it costs to maintain that building. What are you guys putting in back into the building also? What are you guys putting back for our community? Because our community needs more access to that building. That's what I believe in, it's my own, my own opinion.
Absolutely. And we've heard you, especially in the last budget request of wanting more free events. Um, we tried to incorporate more free events, open, um, opening of the doors during the day for free art galleries. Um, for having a uh, craft day for our arts, um, for the holidays. Um, partnering with the recreation department so that we could open up our doors and do free craft events um, with coinciding with the community events. Uh, we have definitely heard you, and we have been trying to be more present in the community. And we do have, I forgot to list that, but we do have four community free events that we have listed as well in our budget. Um, so we absolutely agree with you. Um, I feel that we have been definitely making progress. And with that, um, we have done more fundraisers in the last two years than we ever have. And that is actually with a limited board, because our board is actually smaller than it used to be. Um, so I would say that those um, four, five people, myself included, um, and my part-time employee, we have done more events, more fundraisers than we ever have done before. Um, and if I can continue with that, um, the highlighted events that are listed um, are there. But aside from what I just expressed of the things that we are doing, excuse me, is the fundraisers and the community events and the workshops, is I'm also requesting a um, my part-time employee to become full-time employee. Um, again, it just helps with adding more events, more free events, opening up our doors, having people come in. Um, as an example, today I was able to be here with you to go over this budget while my part-time assistant was running a show for a hundred Garfield students um, watching Seussical this morning. So we just wanna do more of that. We would love to do more of that. I would love to be able to focus more on um, working on our grants. We have a couple of grants in the works right now. I'd love to be able to focus more on grants, focus more on um, sponsorships, focus more on fundraisers and community events, and have my uh, my part-time staff turn to full-time, where she can focus more on the day-to-day that happens in the theater. Anybody have any questions?
You know, I just wanna say that you guys are doing a wonderful job over there. Of course, I'm biased, but um, cuz you guys have been part of uh, community services, and I was the chairperson for, forever seemed like, you know, but um, I think instead of questioning why you're asking for money, we should be saying, how much money, more money do you need? I've seen some of the walls, and I've always said, you know, the walls need repair, the carpet is old, uh, the counters. And it wasn't the plan before um, Director Smart left that she was gonna get all those repairs on, and I don't know what happened to, to all that, you know, cuz she was planning on. Uh, we need to keep it, keep it up, and it's, and we as a city that own it, we should be keeping, taking care of nothing, well, you know, you gotta remember the council she's talking about, they're all volunteers.
Councilman Zegara, Councilman Zegara, I'm a city council member. My full job is to look at
Okay, your full job is to respect me, let me talk, please.
You just, I, you just said that I
I hesitate you.
You said rather than question, I do want you to know that I'm here as a council member to look at the finances. That's all, I'm not saying, I, I agree with it. I'm, I'm just, I'm just questioning that. So please refrain from anything else. I'm not saying anything else. I understand you have a bias.
You, you got your opportunity to speak, please give me mine. Now you for, I forgot I was saying. You know, I mean, they, the people that, the Arts Council, they are not paid by anybody. What they do is out of their goodness of their heart. They spend hours and hours upon hours of being there. And I know because my son directs, he lives in Madera. And he drives all the way over here. I know you're laughing, but I don't care. You know, they deserve whatever they need, they deserve to get it. Because if those kids come down and they put on all those hours for free, I mean, we shouldn't be arguing about, oh, well, you know, this and that, and asking for them, well, what are you doing for me? Why don't you talk to the people that go to the shows? Why don't you see the reviews? That they get, they get wonderful reviews from, from people that actually review plays. And you know, the, everybody loves them. You know, and it wasn't meant as a uh, something against you. All I'm saying is that we, I said we, not you. I said, we should be asking, how much more can we do for you, instead of asking, what are you gonna do for me?
It's ironic, we just spoke for about an hour and a half in regards to our department heads asking for more money or wanting to reduce their budget, but we're talking about, what do you need now? And I'm just saying, in, in, in the realm of things, as a city council member, our fully job is to look at the revenues that come in and go out. When we discuss in regards to department heads, we wanna know what the rate of return is for everything, because we are representative of the community, and we wanna make sure that the community gets the best. We're not questioning the individual, we're actually them, actually using them, making sure that they manage their department adequately, so we can go ahead and give a correspondence, and we can budget them. That's all I'm asking. So when we state, when we state how we think, and I don't have a family member or anything in any, any department. All I ask is, I just want to make sure that I ask the financial obligations.
Nicolette, I have a question. You know, the four um, events that you do, you, you mentioned about the free art um, um, display, the, the few. Let me ask you, okay, how did those work out? Did you get enough um, community involvement? I mean, did you feel that the community enjoyed that? Or maybe are you looking at, oh, maybe that didn't work out so well, maybe I'll do this instead?
Absolutely.
What, what, what's your take on that?
Absolutely. We always evaluate and write up a budget report and evaluation after an event that we do, just to see what worked, what didn't work. Um, I have to say that our, our Um, I have to say that our art gallery in the summer, um it was surprisingly well-received. We had a lot of traffic that came through. We're hoping that if it's more consistent, um say, a summer and a winter uh art gallery, that people will know that there's something to look at um and and they'll come down state, or sorry, they'll come downtown and um and know that there's always something displayed in the theater. There's something displayed right now in the theater, actually. Um, we unfortunately had a low turnout with our holiday craft. Um, we did have a group come in that really enjoyed it. Um, it was the adults um forgot their name, um but it was a an adult school. Yes, adult school that came in and they really enjoyed it and we get, were able to give them some individual attention. So that was really great. Unfortunately, we didn't get the community. But I also think that was a little different between um coming into a building when something's free and then signing up for a program sometimes is just a little bit different. So we're seeing ways that we can attract that attention. Um, so we're just evaluating that. Our Arts and Culture Fest was a free event. Um, we had free crafts out in the patio, we had art displayed from the district. We had an art display, our art gallery in the lobby. Um, we had music playing, we had live performances. All of that was free to the community. We had booths out there um for people to look and for booths to sell uh arts-related and craft-related booths. Um, and we are looking to expand on that, absolutely. Um, so those are just some of the things that worked really, really well, and then we're looking at ways that we can improve um the traction of coming into a free event. So um and budget-wise wasn't too bad, um especially when we when we ran the Arts and Culture Fest, being that a lot of the performers were volunteers. Um, so our cost on those free events have been minimal, which has been really good.
So looking at the direct rate of return and indirect rate of return, I think you have to separate the two sometimes from tangible to intangibles. And I think the indirect rate of return on the art center may be greater than the direct, even though tickets are sold, program ads are sold, there is revenue that's raised, fundraisers, um galore, so. But also the indirect return is is there for the art center. And I could tell you, uh, when we were in uh Las Vegas with um Deputy um City Manager Keen, we met with some folks from a company, then all they do is they tell you how much business you know, these various landmarks bring to and various events bring to your city. So we'll be able to, if we move forward with that sort of A I tool, to be able to answer Councilman Traheal's question in a little more tangible way. Right now, we can say, hey, it brings a bunch of people, you know, to our city, they all eat out, you know, they 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 come here, they buy gas, they stay in the hotels. We're gonna be able to predict that with even, you know, more efficiency if we go with that, with that program showing, you know, those days when there are uh pla- plays and events, how many people come to our town, where they go, what they do. We're gonna be able to show that indirect benefit that the art center provides. Another benefit the art center provides, it just makes our downtown look better. You know, it's a weird shape. Who doesn't love to hate that art center, the way it looks? It generates so much discussion and that's what art's supposed to do. So I mean, it's just one of those things that makes Selma individual. You know, Selma, Ridley, Sanger, we have the same populations, but what separates us? Well, the art center is one thing that separates us and it looks right down uh High Street towards the park and those beautiful statues. It really is, it's a beautiful cityscape and, you know, having that and with the lights we're gonna put in and with the downtown events. And by the way, most people want to be in front of the art center for a reason that it attracts attention. You can't quantify that, you can't monetize that, but it helps. It helps our city, adds to the image of our city, I think, which ultimately is gonna bring people here and want to be part of the Selma experience and the Selma Live experience. And with the T O T, right now thirty percent goes towards um actually, you know, for um for the T for the T O T, twenty percent goes towards the art center. And that is on page two fifty-eight of your the your packet, fifty-nine thousand six hundred. So that's for the arts and I would imagine that's for the for the art center. You know, the city, if if there are some issues, you know, we could always increase the percentage of that T O T because only fifty percent of the T O T goes to the arts. So if there are issues with finding funds, the source of the fund could be that T O T without a whole lot of slippage anywhere else.
Well, you know, you touched on some very unique Scott. You know, it is, the design is different downtown. Oh, it's probably the same designer that builds Fresno City Hall too. You know, same shape. Uh, but you know what? I'll be honest with you. In life, it's all about how you market it. You're right. We're in Vegas, it's how they market it. It's how they, when you go to these trade shows, it's how do you market their their things? And that's how they do it. They market it at at a high level. And and that's what I've learned from over there at Vegas is the marketing tool. How you market it, how you present it to the other areas in the communities, you know, and bring them into the stake, become stakeholders. You know, and we can do this. See, we're, Selma, we're blessed, I'll be honest. We're the biggest town around. We're we're centralized. You know, we're very fortunate. We have a hospital. We have a fire department, we have an ambulance, we, you know, we have Kaiser. We have, you know, all these other amenities around it, Denny's and everything. So we're kind, we have Ross. Other towns don't have that, like, you know, Kingsburg, Fowler, you know, Sanger, you know, Leyton. You know, all these towns, Ridley, see, we're unique in itself. And we we should embrace the marketing operation big time. You know, that's the way to go. And and really, geographically, you're the only art center around the area. Really don't have one no more. Here does Sanger. Here does Reed, I mean, uh Fowler, here did that Kingsburg, you know. I say, you know, questionable, but you guys, Fresno is that without downtown area is still alive. But really, Selma is really unique in itself. Off the freeway, nice restaurants, nice hotels. You know, we, we're kind of blessed in a different way. We have to utilize that talent. That's all I gotta say.
Anything else from council? Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Capital improvements. Afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, here to present a couple of slides on our capital improvement projects that we have in the budget. Uh, in your budget uh worksheet, these are all based on the funds that these projects are slated to be used as far as the the finances go. So these are all funds that receive revenue from uh Fresno County, state, federal, these are not general fund uh dollars. But we do have them in the budget. These are the projects that are planned to continue working on this year for new projects. Uh, so the first fund on this slide is the uh S B one funds. Uh, those uh come from the state. You will see at the next council meeting, a presentation or an item to authorize these funds for the next two projects, which I think is the Dockery Cape Seal and the Nebraska Construction Project. Those are allocated funds each year from the council. Uh, A T P C I D Canal Piping, that's a project that uh was awarded three million dollars from the state. Uh, that application for award included some local match money. So uh it was uh assigned from the council at that time to use Measure C funding. So that will come out of that project, that three hundred and fifty thousand is the uh the local match that you'll see matches up with the three million. Uh, Measure C Streets includes uh some overlays and some reconstruction projects. A couple of these projects I want to note were applied for uh federal funding for C Mac and S D B G. Those uh applications or the award of that fund hasn't come out yet. So if those projects are awarded federal funding, then we'll have uh uh money in the Measure C project or funds to be able to use for other local projects or maintenance. But they are, they are budgeted to use Measure C in case the funding isn't provided federally. Uh, the ARPA Fund, it will, this, uh the Clarkson Lift Station project, which is under construction, uh that will be wrapped up this next fiscal year. Um, worked with finance director to make sure we understood exactly where the ARPA funding balance was. And this is the, this is the amount that uh was allocated by council obligated for Clarkson Lift Station and the ARPA Funds. Uh, and this, that's the the remaining portion of the construction for the lift station. Uh, C D B G, that's Fresno County money uh that comes from HUD. Again, using it for sidewalk connectivity in the southwest portion of town. We uh we have to look ahead a couple of years for that funding, so um I believe on the next council meeting, you'll also see the uh agreement modification for funds that uh we were under budget for last year's project. So those funds are being uh rolled into this year's sidewalk project to do more sidewalk and ramp projects. Uh, the Fund Two Seventy-Two is the C Mac Fund, so that's where all of the federally funded projects are um accounted for in financing. Those, those are all awarded. Uh, we have to request the funding through Caltrans. There's usually a three or four-year cycle for that fund. Uh, the Dinuba and McCall, that's the Signal Project. Uh, so moving forward with the right-of-way acquisition, we worked with Caltrans Local Assistance. Uh, there will be uh an R F P that I'm working on right now to try and get out uh for a right-of-way consultant uh for D B E uh requirements that um the Caltrans requires us to to follow that for that funding.
How much time from the, the, I believe this is the last part, right? You get the right-of-way and then it actually finally goes up. How much time will it take, do you think, from hiring the consultant to being able to proceed with the construction?
There's two processes and I believe through uh Director Keen can correct me that there's some developers in that intersection that understand the right-of-way needs to be dedicated for the intersection. So I believe um they'll be fairly quick to respond to the requests and the process that Caltrans requires us to go through to certify that right-of-way. We can't circumvent that. We can't just go talk to them and say, hey, let's get this right away.
And that's the northeast and northwest corners that are commercially owned. The southeast and southwest, one's residential on the southwest side and southeast is with that mall there.
Yeah.
The shopping mall.
Right-of-way required uh for the southern portion is only on the southwest side.
Okay.
So there's two or three properties that are we we're requesting right-of-way from. Uh, Caltrans again has a process. We have to provide a certain amount of information. We have to go and market so those property owners can see exactly what we're requesting. And uh we have to go through that process so that in the end, we can provide certification to Caltrans that we acquired that right-of-way properly.
I saw where the C Mac funds were about nine hundred and ninety-five thousand for Dinuba McCall on a spreadsheet. Is the ninety-two eight forty, is that what's been spent so far for that?
No, so the ninety-two eight forty is the right-of-way portion of that total.
Just the right-of-way?
Correct.
Not the actual construction of the street stoplight, okay.
So given a timeline, what, when do you think we'll see that um stoplight go up?
My hope is it may be not this next fiscal year, but the next one. Uh, I'm working really hard for this, this next fiscal year. The right-of-way has to be acquired. Uh, once that right-of-way is acquired, uh then we can go out to bid. There's four other projects that rely all on that same intersection, so they have to all be ready to basically go at the same time.
Can you green light it, pun intended, when the um the right-of-way um consultant is hired and gets the approvals? I mean, can it be prioritized as soon as that? It sounds like that's the last big hurdle, the the consultant.
That that's one step.
That's one step.
We can't pers, well, I'm recommending not proceeding with spending money until that's done properly so that that we don't lose any of the funding that's been awarded. The only other step is we have to submit what's called a request for authorization for the funding, an R F A to Caltrans so that they can obligate the construction funds so that they can be then ready to be dispersed. So uh if we see that the right-of-way portion is going order and quickly and and we're doing, we're doing good and we're gonna meet that timeline, uh then we can submit that R F A to Caltrans for the construction money. Uh, and then if if there's funding available for the federal fiscal year, then they can uh provide an E seventy-six or an authorization to use those funds to where we we can then go out to bid uh as soon as we're ready.
I thought we were awarded those, those funds per construction. Those aren't dedicated, those are still at risk?
Warranted, they're, they're available. They aren't, you can't spend the money until you have an E seventy-six from Caltrans.
Okay.
So it's, it's in place, it's on the F TIP, which is uh COG uh oversees that funding.
Right.
So you'll see it in the different fiscal years on the F TIP.
Okay.
Uh, we just, you you have to go through Caltrans's request for authorization for funding before you can actually start spending that money.
And and if I can add, uh, city engineer, how often do they meet to make those authorizations?
Well, they have a deadline at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, who meets? Cog or Caltrans?
Both to make the authorization for spending funds.
So we, we can submit an R F A at any time. Uh, you have to get them in by a certain date. This year it's June in order for them to uh to guarantee that you're gonna have the money in that next fiscal year.
Oh, we're gonna miss this June, but we're gonna try to get next June.
Right, so whenever we are ready, once the right-of-way phase is done, then we can submit an R F A. And if there's funding available within that fiscal year, then we'll be ready.
But we're just gonna need to bug you next year so that it's done before June of next year, so it comes in, okay?
So we're, we've got two R F As going out this week. We're, our guys understand that that timing has to be done, but we, we don't want to obligate it too soon because then you're
Be at risk.
Wired to spend it.
Got it.
So that's the status of that. I appreciate Caltrans Local Assistance uh help through that and they uh have actually been very, the local assistants, staff, and so we're working really hard with them to.
Everybody's working together here, we just gotta get it done.
Yep, so the other street projects are in there. Uh, the uh Mill and Orange Park and Ride, that's a federally C Mac funded project across the street from the police department. So that's um, that's the the funding for the construction of that. Continuing with the different funds on the left, the A T P, that's the two point seven million dollars. So as uh we're anticipating that the design will be uh completed for that trail project um and we'll be able to move into construction. Uh, the local traffic funds historically have all gone into one fund and the Finance Director and her staff helped to uh separate those two funds because they're actually two sources and we want to make sure we use the funding uh correctly. So that's why you see uh the Article Three and Article Eight. Uh, some projects are duplicated, but that's because a portion of that project actually applies to the Article Three, which is more for pedestrian use and the Article Eight's more for the street use. So uh we, we did budget and are allocating some of the L T F funds for what we're saying is alley improvement projects. So with the Public Works Director and looking at the different alleys that were in the worst shape structurally, um hoping to be able to, or planning to use uh some funds to to fix what I anticipate maybe four different blocks. Uh, we did again apply for C Mac money to do that. If we're awarded that, then we can just extend and do more alleys than what we have planned.
One of those, um, we're kind of seeing that because it relates to the mid-valley and the routes picking up the trash from the back um the alleys. So one of them is the condo on Rose Avenue, Rose and Country Club, those several condos there, they're still picking up from the front. Is there a particular problem with that alley behind those condos that's prohibiting mid-valley? Maybe ask them, but keeping their trucks out of there?
I mean, we coordinated with the um manager of the condos regarding um making sure that they didn't park in the rear, because I think that was as much of the issue was just the width of that alley along with landscaping coming over and things like that. I think the landscaping was addressed in terms of timing and making sure all the tenants don't park in the rear. That coordination issue, I believe, it may be why they're not going.
That's the issue, the cars rather than.
Confirm, I I do recall that that was part of the reason that they hadn't been picking up. Confirm, I, I do recall that that was part of the reason that they hadn't been picking up in the rear, but that was part of the discussion.
And then if we're, I hate, sorry for the quick, quick digression, um, mid valley. When you're having the, are you still having the meetings, still having the Wednesday meetings? Maybe when you talk with them, maybe it, it would be good to talk with them about the trash day already because October's going to be here before we know it. And, um, they, they had a good start this year, you know, one day, but I know the residents will be happier with a, with an extended time. If we could just start talking to them about that, where they want to have it, they want to have it here and with the schoolyard, you know, where the buses are or in Kingsburg. Just kind of nail it down so we give the, the residents plenty of notice this time.
Yeah, we can, we can touch base with them, again, I just want to plug the bulky item pickup as well. Um, for residents, I think it's two times a year, they can have bulky item pickup in, in between the community events.
Good point, and it's not just one item, it's two items.
Yes.
Uh, there's the last thing on the slide, uh, I believe Director Keen mentioned earlier, the Floral Avenue Medium at, at State Route ninety-nine. This is the same project he mentioned, it's the impact fee fund is where we're, uh, uh, financing that project, but. That, that's a, that's the capital improvement projects that we have in the budget, uh, appreciate finance director's guidance on. Allowing us to itemize each project in the, the budget so that you can see. How much and how well that, how much that project spent. And, um, so far in the last year or two, most of our capital improvement projects have come in under budget. So we continue to just use the remaining balances, uh, for the next project, so.
Maybe I should have brought this up before, but where's that park that was donated by Yana's Construction? Is that a capital improvement that would appear here or where would that show up?
Uh, yeah, the Thompson Park. That shows up mostly under the Prop sixty-eight grant, uh, fund, so it's a special revenue fund.
Okay.
Where's that at anyways? It said ninety-nine, it was ninety-eight last time, is it ninety-nine now?
Yeah, so we're working with CID on the canal, so the southeast side, the, uh, engineer that's doing the bike pathway that's covering the rest of the canal. He's working to work on that piping. We met with CID to talk through some of the small canals that are pipes coming through there. And then the developer is moving forward with the houses around the park, and so there's some coordination there that we want to make sure and take care of. Um, and then, uh, as far as your question, the Cal Waters requirements that, uh, we have forms we have to fill out and information we have to provide. For their water service, that's on my plate, so I'm taking care of that so that the, uh, design engineer can finish, uh, the plans. And we say ninety-five and ninety-eight and ninety-nine, just because it's, it's almost there, but we want to make sure we get it right before we really finish it.
And then, um, the, uh, when we're talking about the new fire station now has become the. The EMS facility, maybe start referring to it as the EMS facility. Why is that not a capital and why is it not showing up as a capital improvement? Because it's showing up on the chief's radar?
I can let the chief answer, there's a different fund that's being used for that.
Different funding, that's what, that's the key to fund it.
Yeah, these were street funds and, uh.
These are all street funds, that's Senator Tato's Fire Department Fund and Measure S.
Yeah, I believe that facility is incorporated in the city's capital improvement program, um, that.
I see him on the A I P, that's why I'm asking.
As far as the items that the city engineer is referencing, they're specific to his projects itself, so, um.
Yes, the Hart, uh, Hurtado's fund, funding is in fund four five nine, there is a section called capital projects fund. And it's listed on there currently at, uh, four point five, estimated beginning, ending at two point four, including the two point one million fire station.
And are we going to start putting the Rockwell Pond, I know it never left, but are we going to start actually putting funds on their, uh, dollar amounts? For the Rockwell Pond?
I mean, for, for Rockwell Pond, I think there's a couple of things that need to occur before we put a dollar amount. We have a conceptual design, we also don't necessarily have a designation, which is coming up in the park's master plan. And so there's a couple of things, um, with regard to. The funding for Rockwell Pond that we want to nail down in terms of conceptual design, location, how big is it? Our developers contributing to it, what have you, I think, I think we have a fund for it and it's listed in there in the budget, I think there was previously a fund established for it. In terms of a dollar amount, I think there's some more legwork that needs to be done before we have an actual dollar amount for that amount, for, for that park facility. Judging by Thompson Parks, you know, estimate and it being a considerably larger park and a regional park, um, I mean. Uh, it might rival the fire station, but I don't want to get ahead of myself.
For all the street projects, if there's any questions, we have to answer that.
Sorry.
Any questions? Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, back to me, um, so I'm going to go quickly go over the special revenue funds, enterprise funds, debt service funds. So the special revenue funds, as you know, is restricted for a specific purpose, a lot of the funds which we told, we have a total of fifty-six funds currently. Um, Stefan, I will be working on restructuring and, uh, closing out some of the funds that have, uh, little fund balance or no fund balance, so. As mentioned, we did, uh, the L T F article A, we did combine, so the money shows revenues in fund two thirteen. However, it's going to be combined now, uh, with, uh, two eighty and two eighty-one, so that's just, uh, accounting thing we have to do to, uh, combine those together. Um, on the special revenue funds, as you know, these are, they're not general fund funded, they're either funded by grants. Uh, where we have to expense the money to receive the money as well as all the ones that, uh, our city engineer mentioned that are funded by state or county. Which are mostly out listed, so a lot of the special revenue that went over have been mentioned through the department heads throughout our meeting tonight or today. Um, going on to, uh, special revenue, one of the ones I do like to mention to the big ones, of course, is the, um, Measure S. Um, that's the half cent cell stacks that we get, our ending projected fund balance currently right now is two point eight. Um, as you know, uh, what capital items we have been requested on there, um, any questions on Measure S?
Uh, where, where's the deficit going to come from?
That'll be the fund balance, so that last ending fund balance does incorporate the deficit of seven hundred thousand.
Alright.
Um, then another one, um, any more questions? The second one, a big one is the ARPA money, um, I know in the, um, during our presentation, there was, uh, mentioned that our third quarter. Current twenty-four, twenty-five did show a deficit, um, that was due to a journal entry that needed to be done for some expenses that hit the ARPA fund for the Amberwood Sewer Trunk Line. It was a three point five million expense, that is going to be reclassed to the funding, uh, wastewater infrastructure program, which is fund four six one, that's where we have the bond refinance. So once we do that entry, it reconciles, so that's why ARPA has been reconciled to remaining amounts to be the Clark, Clark, Clark Station. Clark's Lift Station, yes, and as well as leaving a, a positive fund balance in the opera, so that's one we have to keep track of because we have to report that to the feds. Um, secondly, um, going on to, any, any other questions on special revenue funds? I think I covered all of them, a lot of impact fees is also in special revenue funds and they were mentioned throughout the, today, um, with the various department heads of what expenses we have in there. No? So the enterprise funds is, uh, where we keep all our funds where it's treated like a business, uh, we provide a service and we went through a couple of them already. Uh, ambulance fund was one of them, uh, reflecting a sixteen, uh, thousand dollar surplus, uh, ending fund balance, next slide. Okay, here you go, uh, ending fund balance four point four, um, a lot of, we, uh, the Pioneer Village currently is at one fourteen net, um, still having a reserve there of ninety-nine thousand. And then we have the transit center does reflect us, a deficit of two seventy-eight, um, but does have reserves in there showing a reserve balance of one oh four. The garbage is swell at two hundred forty-seven, and lastly, as mentioned earlier with the cultural arts, um, still stating a deficit of three hundred thirty-two thousand. Um, a lot of this was pre-COVID time, uh, where a lot of the monies wasn't coming in, so we're going to chip away at that to make sure that we have a balanced budget there. Live please. Any questions on enterprise funds? Okay, so this would be, uh, my last final slide, um, this is a debt service, um, so I just wanted to touch, uh, kind of see of the city's obligations, so that's where we have the section in our. Uh, fund sources, so the first one is the twenty seventeen general obligation bond. I believe this was to fund the police station construction project, uh, currently outstanding is three point three million. Um, this one is sitting in fund three sixty in the debt service section of our. Fund sources, and then the next one is the lease revenue bond, the twenty twenty-four series. This is where we're reclassing the ARPA money, as I mentioned earlier, um, we have monies coming in, transfers in from, uh, general fund. Um, as well as fund four oh six, the super impact fees to offset the principal interest in this, uh, fund. The next one is, uh, the refunding lease obligation bond. This one is the twenty fifteen, my understanding was a mixed bag, in other words, it had a, they refinanced a bunch of other bonds together to create this twenty fifteen. This one is four point three, the original bar was four point three, we currently have an outstanding balance at two point one. This is funded out of the general fund expense. The last, the next one is the pension obligation bond, this one's sitting in fund three oh one. Um, as the mayor mentioned earlier, there was in twenty-two, twenty-three, an increase. Um, where the increase of this fourteen, one point four million was, um, actually was fourteen million. Did increase the revenues as well as its expenses, so that was the significant difference there in twenty-two, twenty-three. The reason this is, is the auditors have to do a journal entry to record the liability on our books to show in fund three oh one. So they have to show monies coming in, monies going out to make sure that the liability hits the new fund of three oh one. So that's, that's the, um, the reason why there was an increase in twenty-two, twenty-three. Going on to the successor, we have one for three point five for fund three ninety-one, we are making payments out of that in the, in that fund. And the last one is again, the capital leases, which was mentioned by chief of the, I believe is a fire station or the fire vehicle. And the last payment of that is fifty-seven thousand principal. I think that completes my debt service, any questions on debt service?
Any questions on the debt service? Okay, so the bond, so you've got all these different, um, debt measures. A- as we discussed at our, um, ad hoc finance committee meeting. Can you look into the feasibility of combining these and see if we could get? A lower interest rate because some, the interest rates are all over the board.
Right, I can, um, uh, check with an advisor, um, I know that they did that for the twenty fifteen, which was a mixed bag, that's why they had a lot of assessments, a lot of them combined together. Yeah, and I know there's general obligation bond, which is different than the lease bond, so I can try to find out to see what we can do. There is, uh, on the debt service fund, there's a lot of funds in there, there's eleven funds and I'm going to reconcile those, it looks like we did have a, a refinance ninety-two point one fund that we're going to. Try to clear up with the auditors, they're working with me right now to see if we can reduce the, the funds in the test service. So that way, uh, we only reflect the ones that are currently happening.
Do we know how much we pay a month on our debt service or even annually?
Um, yeah, I do have them separated here, are you, are you referring to any specific one?
Uh, I'm, I'm referring to all of them in an aggregate, on an aggregate basis.
Mm-hmm, I can, I can provide a document in the.
When we do the budget, the next council meeting, will you, will you have time?
Sure.
Okay. And, um. In terms of the, um, the sewer, the wastewater, um, bond that we approved last year for the Amberwood project, well. Not just the Amberwood project, that whole corridor there, it doesn't extend to Dinuba. The credit line is high enough at this point to tap that. Um, for Dinuba to open, to unlock that area, Dinuba or single family home construction or whatever needs a sewer line, including a gas station at Dinuba McCall and all that good stuff. What's holding us back from doing that? Is the bond mark, where is the bond market right now in terms of tap? If you tap that credit line with capital one, do they have to actually sell the bonds before they'll provide that additional credit line? Or are they just providing?
My understanding is that, um, they provided that amount and we draw down for that amount, so we'd have to go back and re. You know, reapply, I guess, for, to see.
Requested.
Requested additional funding for, do we know the amount of the new extension yet or anything?
I don't know if it was an extension, how much is that, is that credit line?
They have on the book seven point one.
Yeah, and I believe it was, uh, as the mayor said, I believe it was up to sixteen. Um, as we've stated, the Dinuba sewer line was oversized based off of prior modeling. And so we're finalizing those plans, those plans would have to go out to bid, we would have to have an award present or at least. A, uh, an amount to go to the creditors and say it's this amount, and so we're just. And the city engineer may be able to give an update on the plan review for that with S K F as well, but that's, I believe, where we're at is waiting for the final signed redesigned. Reduced plans to reduce our debt burden if we were in fact going to go out for bid and then get financing for that. I think it was originally estimated upwards of like eight, nine million and with the reduction in cost, it shouldn't be that much, so we won't have to use hopefully the full sixteen.
It's all correct, the plans, uh, have been approved by Fresno County, uh, S K F has, uh, finished their review, so we're just finishing with CID, but once those plans are approved and they can sit on the, sit on the shelf. And be ready to, uh, go out to bid whenever the council wants.
And then in terms of tapping that credit line, we're paying for just the amount of. The amount of money that was used for the current sewer line, not, not the additional amount that'll be used for the Dinuba line, correct?
You have to draw down the exact expense, yes.
I have a question, how far is that, that proposed sewer line on Dinuba going to go? Is it going to go to, is it going to go to Orange or is it going to stop in Dinuba? What do you guys, what, it's going to stop on McCall?
It goes past, it goes past McCall, the design goes all the way past, um.
We were going to stop at the canal.
And then all the way to the ditch, almost to the ditch, so it's designed per the, the S K F master plan to go the entire length of Dinuba. You don't, we don't have, we can, we can put it out to bid in, in sections if you don't want to build the whole thing, but it's designed.
Based on his building.
My understanding was it was going to stop on Dockery, I mean, I'm sorry, on, on Orange because of that canal, I don't know if you guys.
That, that's, that's roughly where I believe it stops, so the canal is the borderline of S K F's master plan.
And, and understanding the growth pattern, I think it would be in our best interest to. And discuss crossing that canal because that'll give.
Yep, the other side of the canal is part of the Amberwood, uh, drainage area, so those homes in that development would drain towards Amberwood.
That's, that's covered on that line, where would the other line go?
Down, and it's a Golden State and goes under the.
Golden State.
Railroad, so the S K F line is in where Golden State is, so that, that, that's a S K F facility.
Thank you.
So just to reiterate a few things, we're going to add for the park because we want those park lights put in. So you'll adjust that and then you'll figure out what fund that's going to come out of.
Is that the Schaefer Park light?
Right, Schaefer Park.
So I wanted to double check on that as well, so, um, what was the projected amount? Did you?
Um, we estimated a million.
Okay, would that be something you all would agree to be hit fund balance to bring it, we, I know we have a four point four right now as a balanced budget, would you want? But you all look at to bring it down to, they'll go, they'll bring our fund balance to three million and it'll show, uh, a deficit. This fiscal year because we're going to dip into reserves or, because that's a million dollars.
Is that going to be, I have a question, can I have a question?
Go for it.
Is that going to, if we establish it for the July for this year, for next year's budget or this year's, next year's budget, right? Um, is that going to be projected to be built? This right now, and if it isn't.
Can do half and half or maybe, I mean, depending on the scope of what the cost is, but we can bring back a mid-year adjustment if needed. Yeah.
Another question is, another question is, um, I know I brought this up in the past, but. To get the estimated value of what the actual project is going to, what it's going to be and when the start date is going to be, because if it's going to go over. Half of our budget, we could actually budget half and then budget the other half, but at the same time, if we could bet, if we can budget right now. Some lights that go and be put all around. The park, I mean, that's, I've seen that done before while they're.
Would be the temp, temporaries?
Yeah, the temporary lights.
Random.
But if it's going to run over the budget. But if it's gonna run over the budget, I mean, like, you know already, you already know the.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't anticipate that type of project taking a a whole year to design. You you are gonna have some uh engineering structurally for the foundations, like the uh public works director talked about. The lights themselves are gonna, the timing is gonna depend upon availability of the actual facility itself. So I can't speak to that right now, but a lot of our street projects, it takes almost two years to like, from start to finish. That project should not take two years.
But good, but when the last time Mike was, he was here asking, he was talking about, he was gonna bring a company to check the impact of the actual, the uh, not the footings, but the actual.
Bolts, yeah.
Yeah, and if that's gonna happen, I would anticipate that it's gonna be probably, we're, we're already in June, so we're already looking at September, October. Even, even that, right?
Yeah, and then it uh you may not, it may not be recommended to do that kind of structural project during the winter with the the water. So that would be something I would s- recommend starting next spring. Essentially could get done in one fiscal year.
I mean, if we're budgeting a million, that's a pretty good healthy amount. We budget half.
Budget half.
Yeah.
We don't go into.
And if we have to tap more, if we have to come back and get more, cuz the project's.
Uh one, one of the things we talked about last meeting, uh he was saying he wants to go those Musco, Musco lights. Um he was saying because they have to replace the base. But what if he went with with a company that has the same size base, uh poles that would fit the base that we have now? I mean, that would be a lot cheaper, right? Up at the integrity.
Potentially, or we, the issue is the safety of the footings and understanding.
Integrity.
So before, we can recommend and have an engineer that actually stamps and certifies that that new light pole will be safe. They're gonna wanna make sure that that footing is structurally sound, that the bolts are structurally sound. So I think the director of Public Works was looking at all of the costs that it was gonna take to make it sure that we are structurally sound with our existing footings. It may just be a better decision to start new and and uh get new.
And then, didn't we get, didn't we hire a structural engineer to check the poles and all that?
Not the bolts, the actual poles, so the metal poles, to see which ones.
Well, I think, I think I would like to see how much it's gonna cost to replace the whole thing and what it's gonna cost to get a guy out there to tell us, hey, they're safe, let's put them under. I mean, cuz.
And it's not just if it's safe and put it on there, it's, if it is safe, they're structurally sound, then what type of pole would have to be designed in order to fit exactly onto those bolt patterns? So there's a lot of variables.
Yeah, the same one that they took, they have a bunch of them at the.
Yeah.
So what you're, so what you're saying is that in a municipal government, there's a lot more steps than actually being just a private, which is gonna take more time.
I would, the school district is gonna be the same way, anything that.
So, let me, let me ask you just real quick and hypothetical, hypothetical speaking. We could budget for the two thousand twenty five, twenty six, three hundred fifty thousand. And we could budget for twenty six, twenty seven, three hundred fifty, and look for some kind of a grant as it's, as it's being proposed right now, right?
That would, that would be a good idea.
So we, we need a comparison definitely between Musco and non-Musco, and we need to look at all the cost alternatives, cuz this is a major capital improvement project. Right. Pretty good. All right, everybody, thank you very much. Finance Director Moreno, great job. Thank you for all you extra hours you put in. You haven't been here very long, but it seems like it. You put two years and two months. So thanks for all your work. Does council have any more questions? Um we have a last oral communications. Would anyone like to address the council before we adjourn? Anybody online or on the phone?
No hands up this time.
Great, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.